Okay, let me know when you're on.
All right.
By the way, hi Carla.
Hello, sorry.
Hi Carla.
I'm populated a little bit because my dog was sick all over the place, so I was cleaning it up.
All right. We're good to go, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. All right, today is March 8th. This is Barberton City Council. We are going into our committee meetings. First up is City Properties, Parks and Recreation with Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Called order City Properties, Parks, Recreation. Today is Monday, March 8th, 2021. It is 6:01, we're all virtual. The committee is present, plus everybody noted on my sheet. We have no new requests for legislation. And for miscellaneous discussion, do I have anything from the committee? Mr. Councillor Jayber?
Thank you Chair. Anything new yet with the skateparking information from anybody from city administration?
Were you able to get any of the names and businesses that were interested over to the mayor's office?
Right now they're waiting just for the name and the prints first to see how, where it's going to be exactly. If they are, if it is going to be in Decker Park. Because the businesses are in the area, the residents are in the area, my ward. They have prints, names, this information so I can give it to them. So they can move forward with that.
So the donors are only interested if it's at Decker Park?
No sir, they just wanted the information on it, just so they just want to see where it's going to be and how it's going to be. Just wanted more information. Can't go, can't go on their table and say, here donate to this, and there's no information to talk to them about.
Yeah, we're still working on that. Hopefully more information soon.
Director Tracy, do you have anything to add there?
Yeah, I don't see Mr. Hunt on, but I did forward Mr. Hunt the results of some of our investigations for the utilities in the park. And most of it was all good news, so there shouldn't be anything restricting placement of the skatepark and use of the current utilities throughout the park. So it was pretty much all good news throughout the investigation.
Thank you, Director.
I got it.
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, yeah, I've been throwing this idea around to some people. And they, the people I talked to would like to see this handled the way the turf program was handled. Have fundraisers and take it out of the city's hand, paying for it. They don't, they think there's better ways of spending money. And the way you could, you know, if they had fundraisers, just like what they did for the turf, I think that'd be a great idea. And I would, you know, contribute to that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm all for privately, privately funding this endeavor and, like you said, not putting it on the city's books, but still having us maintain it and still keep a yearly kind of flow coming in to maintain and keep it upgraded and keep it safe.
Plus, one thing, excuse me, one thing that they did on that turf is they raised enough money, you know, for the next time around and insurance and stuff like that. And I think we could do that. I think what we would need is like a maintenance fund and the insurance. The last time we tried to do this, the insurance was outrageous. And I think that's how it got stopped, dropped because it was just too high. But we need to look into see what the price of that insurance would be before we go on. But I, I am really behind doing fundraisers and stuff like that.
Mr. President, is this something that a fund, basically a pass-through fund through the foundation? Do you think that they could possibly be open to setting that up?
I couldn't speak for them. I don't know who, you'd have to find somebody, you know, it, it takes some doings. Brian Cannelli did a great job on that turf and he worked really hard on it. And I don't think it'd be quite as intense as that, but it still takes some doings. But I'm sure the foundation would help in some way.
Thank you, Councillor Coburn, I saw your hand.
Nina Angeloff has her hand up, I wanted to point that out to you.
Oh, okay. Councillor Angeloff?
Thank you Chair. And I have to piggyback on what the president said because it was the insurance was very high. And you know, if it was, it's like a part of our, if it's insured through the city. And that will have to come out of the general fund. And I think everybody's been talking about this and this has been popular before and dropped. And I think the number one reason was because the insurance, the liability on it was extremely high. So whoever, Mr. Chair, maybe you should, you know, look into the insurance, talk to Mr. Flaker or the mayor and see what that insurance is on that. And then, you know, you have hours, you want, you know, you don't want them, or maybe you do at night. You know, are there lights there? Is it going to be canvas? Is there going to be an adult there? You know, there's a lot because of the liability on insurance. So I would really like for somebody to check that because I think that was a cure. Why it never came across before because that's came out of the general fund. That added insurance policy. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Coburn.
The Parks Director had told us two weeks ago that he was going to be looking into the insurance for us. So I know he was starting the research on that insurance situation.
I looked into it a little bit, they needed a little bit more details to give me a quote on the insurance.
Councillor Greer, I see your hand.
Yes, sir. Thank you Chair. I just wanted, new mistake. Thanks Chair, I just wanted to point out, just pointers. I think Clinton has one, I believe, that's open. We may be able to get ahold of them too as well and see how, somebody that already has one instituted. There's also, all those are the same municipalities, there's also skate parks at a lot of our metro parks. So the metro parks might be able to, to point us in the right direction too as well as far as liability and how they handle that. And how they run their parks, that's all.
Thank you, Councillor. Well, I do have to say, I do like Mr. President's idea of basically making it a private endeavor in conjunction with the city. And even if the insurance premium is going to be the main problem or main obstacle, then I don't see anything wrong with, you know, yearly fundraiser like the athletic department or the turf committee, I should say, does with the turf. Even if it's, you know, once a year, having a showcase of local talent for it to raise funds. But basically something to keep it going every year to fund, to fund everything. So it doesn't put a strain on our general fund. But I do believe through private donations and through private fundraising, I do believe that this could work, especially with Director Tracy doing his investigations, showing that it's all clear that land. I think this is something that, as Councillor Angeloff said, we kind of dropped, dropped earlier. I think we can pick it up and really start to put a hold on it. So do I have any other miscellaneous discussion? Councillor Jayber?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor, Mr. Tracy's got that information. How long you think you have that information for us, for the print or the name? So we can start doing the fundraisers or move forward with that, sir?
Well, there's already a process established through the Parks Department that's been adopted on naming. And this was adopted several years ago, so please look into that. And, you know, we're working on, on, on this, but there's a full plate of things that we're working on throughout the city. Especially the budget here. So I can't give you a hard and fast deadline of when we'd be able to get additional information to you. And I'm working with Mr. Hunt on that as well.
Thank you, sir. Just so when you do get the information, just let me know so I can start passing it forward through social media and through the newspapers. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone. Do I have any other miscellaneous discussion? Director Patterson, do you have anything to add?
No.
Thank you. Well, hearing nothing else then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, and we are adjourned at 6:10.
Thank you very much. Next up is Public Welfare and Safety with Mrs. DeBevick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring to order the Public Welfare and Safety Committee meeting. It's Monday, March 8th at 6:11. Via go-to meeting. All members of the committee are present, as well as all council members and all others noted. We have no new requests for legislation, but we do have some pending legislation. The first piece which we will be voting on this evening is ordinance number 14, 2021. And this is to enter into contract with Orianna House. Does anyone have any questions about that particular piece of legislation? Okay, the next piece of legislation, which I'm not certain if it's the first reading tonight or the second reading. For, to amend Barberton codified ordinances, amusement devices, skilled, skill-based amusement machines and arcades. I had emailed all of the council members with some information that I acquired from local communities as to how they proceed with this kinds of establishments. I'm not certain that everybody had an opportunity to look at it. So I guess I'll entertain any questions either about what I, I sent you or thoughts on the matter. Angeloff?
muted. Thank you Chair. I just was doing a little bit of history on this and, and I remember last year after, after the budget, one of the things, when it was brought up about Sisson's building on State Street, that was brought up again. And, you know, the, my constituents in that area was all upset that this was coming up again. So I had pulled this codified and looked at it and sent a lot of different changes. The safety park was, was looking at this, we were looking at this by, you know, changing the penalties and changing per machine and the annual rate and that type thing. And then it dawned on us that it was safety, it wasn't under codes, which we thought it was under planning codes. Well, that is what prompted the moratorium because of the changes. There might have been other council people too that had sent their changes up regarding the amusement device skill base. So there was a lot of changes, Mr. Hunt was new, so we did the moratorium. And then it was, and I apologize, I, I'm thinking it's under codes and it was under safety. So then, and this was brought up again. And I'm going to be very honest to tell you that the, I'm 100% and have always, with the cost increase per machine, that, that would be billed twice a year. But I am not in favor of changing the hours. So you're looking at changing 836.04 and 836.06. And there, there's other things on this huge ordinance that I think, you know, needs to be brought up. I, so kind of forward to, yes, we think those machines, we think 500, I even went higher than the 500 per machine. But I'm not in favor of the hours. No way should we have, be open at eight in the morning. And I know Mrs. DeBevick, the things that you had sent to us, I had Akron and I had Norton last year. And so you're kind, it's kind of putting us in a bind because I'm going to have to vote no because I don't want the hours increased. But yes, I do want the fees increased.
So, so in all fairness, that's why I acquired the information is because, that's why we have, that's why we have three readings is so that we can discuss if we want to, you know, you know, look at the hours a little differently. You know, just, just, that's why I, I compiled the information so that we could have a discussion about it.
Right.
So, I mean, as far as the amendment or the amending that in this piece of legislation, we may have, very well have other areas in which we need to look at. But we can always, you know, we can continue to look into that, you know, into what sections need change. And I would love to, if you've already, you know, done some research about it, I would love to, you know, for you to share it with me because it would save, you know, save me time.
Right, right. Yeah, but then I'm just, I'm just, there's two sections that you're changing. And I'm sure 100% of all of us say yes to the increase in the machine. But I am not. I, I'm just, I just think Mr. Surgeon, you know, he admittedly, he was open 24 hours. He knew that when he signed the application. And this all goes down to the safety director and all this with the penalties and things of that sort. So we're saying, okay, he's saying, okay, I'll pay the difference, I'll, you know, I'll pay that. But, you know, I want to be open later. And I just think at this point, Mrs. DeBevick, because we do have a moratorium, I, I just think that, that 836, that whole chapter needs to be looked at and, and maybe discussed openly. But I just want to be honest with you. If, if we're voting on both of those, I'm going to have to vote no because I do not agree with giving any more hours. Because he knew he was, this was not 24 hours, seven days a week. I don't care, you know, what any of them say, he knew that. And he stayed open because it didn't get caught and it's okay. So I don't, I just think the hours ought to remain the same until we can, you know, sit down and further look at this chapter. So if it's going to remain those two options, I'm going to have to vote no.
So I, I just want to add, you know, if you look at the communities that I, I sent to you, obviously, obviously the higher fees were for much longer hours open. So anywhere where they charged, and I, unfortunately, I can't open my email, that's where the information is that I sent to you. Because I don't want to lose contact here. But if I remember correctly, there were a couple of locations, including maybe Fairlawn and Green, that you couldn't, they can't operate between the hours of 1:00 AM and 6:00 or 7:00 AM. But they charged $200 to $300 per month per machine. But then their initial.
Yeah, per month.
Per month, per machine, in advance. But then also the yearly, the yearly location fee was less.
Yes, yes.
So, I mean, the other location, I, I can't, I can't, I can't look at it because is, there was Fairlawn and Green and then I think I pulled up. Right, they were 5,000, but they were, they had extended hours too. I would say that we mirror Akron. They were $200 a machine, the same fees and the same hours. We were exactly the same as Akron. So I just think that in order to be comparable, as, as Mrs. Coburn mentioned last week, she asked about the comparability with other, or maybe, maybe Mr. Griffin asked that, I can't remember. About being comparable with other communities, the higher fees definitely extend a little longer hours. So should it be 2:30, maybe not, maybe it should be 1:00 AM. Like, most of them, I felt like were at 1:00 AM, other than the, the one location was, I don't know, 2:00 maybe. I think one of them was 2:00 AM, but their fees were really high.
It just looks good because we're, we're going to, it's another 25 hours a week more. So I, I just, I just don't, if those are the only two things we're taking on this, you're amending those 04 and 06. I, I just can't, I just, I agree, yes, that we need to look at that and we need to look at the annual fee. And we need to look at the penalties, what the fee is on the penalties and that. But I can't, it's like we're rewarding him an extra 25 hours a week. And I just, I'm just letting you know that I'm, I have to vote no because I just don't think at this time, because there is a moratorium and, and, and needs a lot more work on this, on this chapter, on this section. I think we ought to, I'd like to see it separated. Maybe just vote on the per machine, that $500 and not on the hours. I'm just being honest with you and like I said, I did a lot of research on this last year. And I kept on thinking, well, Mr. Greer had 630 or something, section 630. And that's what kind of baffled me, I was, what, I, I didn't know what was going on. And then I thought, well, why is this in safety? Because I did it in codes. So the whole thing kind of got a little messed up. But that, that's, I just wanted to let you know and your committee know that if those are the two, only two things that are being changed, I'm going to have to vote no on that. Because I think like a reward or giving him an extra 25 hours a week, I just, I, I just, I think we need to do a lot more research. And I, and I do have yours, Mrs. DeBevick, that you gave me. And I was really surprised at Mogadore. You know, there's, their annual is like 5,000. So, and the hours, I really don't think anybody, 8 o'clock in the morning, really needs to go out gambling. I think we have it at 10 o'clock and I think that's pretty sufficient right there. But I, I don't agree on the extra 25 hours a week. Thank you.
I, I, I do want to add that I did visit the location, one of the locations on Friday evening about 8:45 or about, I don't know, maybe 20 minutes because I personally don't like to put my money. I don't have any skill, so let's just say that. I, you know, I.
I don't either, I don't gamble.
So I'll put my, I spent my $25 and I left. But I wanted to just kind of look at the atmosphere in there. And I have to say that it was very, they were very strict with, as a matter of fact, Mick was standing behind me. Because of course we didn't want to put $20 in two machines, right? So Mick was standing behind me and he was actually told he had to sit down because of COVID. He, I said, well, we live together and he said he didn't care. We had to sit, we had to be seated, we had to keep our mask above our nose. They walked around like crazy people wiping every machine. I mean, they were very on the ball when, when I was in there. And it, there was not a seat to be had in there. So there was a large crowd.
We don't know that when he was open 24 hours. You know, he was under our violation when he was open 24 hours. So right now he knows we might be paying attention. But how can you clean the machines and how can you, when you're open 24 hours, seven days a week? How, how do you, how do you prevent COVID at that point? So I just, I, I was in those places too, checking them out.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to give you an update on, on that, that I did visit also. Mrs. Frye, go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs., thank you, Mrs. DeBevick. I was going to say, if you can get your email on your phone, you could look at this, the, what you sent to us. Your sitting email.
I was trying to, I was trying to get, to get it, but I was having a hard time concentrating on finding the email and talking to you.
But what I was going to say is we're more in line with the city of Norton. And if we raise the fees of the $500, we would be the same on the license per location and the machine fee. But Norton's hours are quite different than ours. They, they don't open until 10:00. And on Sundays, they don't open until 1:00, which I think would be a nice thing, to have a little bit of respect for Sunday. But I just wanted to point that out. And then I have a question for Mr. Flaker, if he's here. As I was reading about how these locations operate, it said that anytime there is a winner, they have to record the time, the machine serial number and all this other information and submit it to the finance department. And if he was open 24 hours a day, I mean, the time is on there, the day. Did we have violations that we could track through the reports that he gave? Or did he not report during the times that he was open 24 hours a day? Mr. Flaker?
Mrs. Frye, I'm here. I, I've never seen a report from either of the locations here in Barberton of their winners list. Now, I don't know if they would just mail that in directly to previously CCA, now Rita. So they have it for tax purposes? I don't know if they did that. But I've never seen a winner's list from either one of those locations.
Okay, I was reading, I was reading legislation from other cities. I hope that that is actually something that had to be done in Barberton. I, I know it had to be done in Norton, I'm pretty sure it was Norton. But anyway, that would be another way of tracking, you know, when they're actually open, if they don't, you know, fudge the days and times and that sort of thing.
I did have to sign in first and last name. And I, and I signed, only signed my first name and they came and got me and told me that I couldn't stay in there if I didn't put my first and last name. So, and they made everybody in front of me as well. So with, with respect to your comment about, about Norton, they, the difference on the weekends is, as far as hours go, is that they're open, open until 2:00 AM. 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And I think ours is 10, ours is 10, if I'm not, not mistaken.
No, I think, I, I don't have our legislative, I probably do.
It's closing hours, they're not allowed to operate 11:00 PM to 10:00 AM. Yeah, so it would be 10:59.
So Friday and Saturdays in Norton, they can operate until 2:00 AM. Provided they provide their own security after 10:30. Yeah, which, which has to be approved by the safety director, the, the plan, the safety plan.
Right, right. I dropped something.
And I think, I think all other days, we're only open till 11:00 and this is midnight. Go ahead, Mrs. Coburn.
Yeah, I didn't know if you could see me, but I, it seemed like there is quite a bit in question here is this whole thing and that we really shouldn't be changing any hours. And I agree with wanting to charge them more, but this whole ordinance is like needs revamped. And I'm kind of confused as to why we want to pursue putting a Band-Aid on this when we need to change the whole thing.
Well, I think, I think we kind of, I think.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I think we kind of discussed that when Mr. Surgeon was here or, or attended the meeting, at least not we, I should say he, that, you know, he has some employees laid off in that, you know, it has reduced, you know, the number of people that he has working. If I remember correctly, that's what he said. I mean, I, you know, I'm not, I'm in favor of collecting an additional, you know, $25,000 from him. Do I think that that $25,000 is worthy of additional hours? Yes. Are they, is it worthy of the additional hours we have proposed?
25,000?
25,000 from his location, yes. Yes.
I believe it would bring in an additional 40, around $48,000 annually from.
Yes.
Two locations.
Yes. So I mean.
He owns both of the locations in town?
No, the other gentleman, no, he does not own both.
Okay.
And the other gentleman was, I think, I believe, operating later also. I don't believe he was operating all night. So we would bring in.
I agree that I will have to vote no on the hour changes. I just think we're, I think that we're jumping on this. And he may be a small business owner, but he's not the only small business owner that is suffering. And I just think that we need to have a better look at this than just, you know, he spoke and you presented it. he spoke and you presented it and now we're going to vote on it. I think it should be-
Well, actually, I, in all fairness, I, I gave three readings so that we could discuss it. So he presented, he, it was brought to me, he presented it and he didn't bring it to me. Mr. Greer brought it to me and it was presented and I, all I've done is follow up on my due diligence of what I said I was going to do, which was look at area communities, what they did and visit, and that's what I did.
Um, Mr. Heidecker, who'll stand up next?
Oh, Mr. Heidecker, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I just want to put a couple of different things out here is we only have two of those places in town, correct?
Correct.
And with the conditional, even if there was no moratorium on, with the conditional use per permits, it's virtually, between that and zoning, it's virtually impossible for another one to open. Uh, so we have that there. And just so, just so people know that don't know this, um, we have two of those, but I could tell you there's at least a dozen bars in this city, mine included, that have Keno that's drawn every four minutes. The hours of Keno are 6:04 AM to 2:29 AM daily. I, I'm hard pressed to see what the difference is between somebody coming into a bar that actually can serve alcohol during those hours versus an establishment that does not serve alcohol. On the other hand, when a place signs up to be a lotto retailer, there, as Mr. Jaber could reaffirm there, there are strict qualifications and strict rules to be allowed to be those retailers. Um, I would like to see, I would like to see personally, these two establishments, if they want to extend their hours and are willing to pay for it, then I would be willing to say, let's see if they can follow the letter of the law we have currently until the next time their machines are due, the payments are due. And if they have held up their end and could follow the current rules, then maybe we can look at changing prices, changing times. But with the admission of being cited by Barberton for not following the rules, I would like to see, just as myself, other restaurants and bars in town, Mr. Jaber's station, we have to prove that we can follow the rules of the Ohio Lottery to be allowed to work or operate during those times. So I would like to see us tell them, let's see you follow the rules until the next payments due. And if you can, then we can talk about giving you an extension for a price. Thank you.
I'm not certain what the licensure is with the state because they have to be licensed with the state before they apply to the city, if I'm not correct.
That is correct.
That is, that is- Mr. De- Correct. But at the same time, like I said, we're up, the people that are selling Keno from 6:04 AM to 2:29 AM, we are under strict regulation. And if we mess up the rules, then we could potentially have that stripped out of our establishments.
Right.
So I would like to see them prove themselves to be able to follow the rules and not be cited, as this gentleman was, before we can reward with more hours or even at that price. That's my opinion. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Angeloff.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr. Heideck, I thought you had said that if he's willing to pay more, then we could leave him, then he, he deserves more hours? That's what it seems as though, that we're going to charge you more, but we're going to give you more hours. And that's the problem that I have with that is that we're almost rewarding him by giving him an extra 25 hours there.
That's not what he said. That's not what he said.
Oh, what did he say?
Actually, I was going to say, I, I had mentioned to Mrs. DeBevick, I am in, uh, support of what Mr. Heideck said. What he said was that he would be supportive of the legislation if the, uh, business owner could show compliance with the current ordinance. That's what he said, and I would be supportive of that as well.
Thank you, Director. Uh, Counselor Angeloff, that was what I was getting at is I want to see them prove that they can follow our court, current ordinance before we even think of allowing extra hours, even for extra money. Because as one of them's already been cited, they've shown that, you know, I'm not saying they're serial rule breakers, but my comparison was by being an Ohio Lottery retailer, if I can't follow the rules, it's taken from me. I would like to see them prove that they can work within the confines of what we have and then explore it. Thank you.
That's exactly what I'm saying. I would vote no. I, I vote yes for the increase, but no on the hours. Um, because I think that, that is something that has to be looked at. And he even said, I think somebody asked him how many employees he had and he wasn't even sure. He said six or seven. And we said with the COVID, who, how many do you have? He goes, I think I have five. Well, if-
Well, there were, there were four.
He only has two establishments. I would hope payroll, that he would know how many, you know, employees.
Was she finished talking? I'm sorry, it kind of cut off. Does anybody else have anything to add? Mrs. Frye?
Thank you, Chair. Um, that is in our ordinance about reporting. And actually, what it's for is it, it's for income tax for the person that wins. So anybody over $10, it has to be, uh, reported to, uh, the income tax division. Um, and I would think the city income tax division, so Mr. Flaker, that would probably be Rita at this point, correct? That they would have to send her in to them about?
That would be correct. And I can always follow up with Rita and make sure those two establishments are turning in their information that they're supposed to be.
Okay.
I think, I guess, I guess what I'm, I'm thinking, and this is, I don't have any information to corroborate this, but I guess what I'm thinking is that if it is like the, uh, Mr. Heideck has discussed with the fact that they have to be certified through the state, I'm guessing that they, and they have to be certified every year and they probably have to be compliant through the state for licensure. But I don't know that unequivocally. I'm just, um, guessing that would be something that I would want to look at also. Um, does anyone else have anything? Oh, Mr. Majes, I'm sorry, you were-
That's all right. Um, is there any penalties if they, um, violate a rule? You know, like if, do we have anything in, in written in stone for, uh, let, let's say they go past the hours of operation? You know, there should be some type of penalty for that.
I didn't see anything, but I can't be absolutely certain, but it said, it does say, I think the first time is a warning. And then any sub, subsequent could lead you to, to the city revoking your permit altogether. Uh, don't quote me on that. I read so many ordinances from so many different, or some, so many different areas that I, I may have read that in another one, but, um- Mrs. Coburn?
There is something, if they are cited, they, and they violate, there is a $1,500 a day possible fine for every day that they are in violation of any of the rules that we have. I read that, um, this past week. But that goes through, uh, Mrs. Doherty, that would be through her office, that that, that would be fined.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coburn. All of the, and all of the rules that I read are starting to run together.
I bet. Mr. Heideck has his hand up.
Yes. Mr. Heideck?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I have it in front of me here, 83605, revocation hearing procedure A. License may be suspended or revoked at any time by the Director of Public Safety on satisfactory proof that violation of laws of this state, ordinances of the city, or of this chapter occur on premise. In addition to any license suspension, the Director of Public Safety may assess the licensing Z a penalty of not less than 500 nor more than 1,500 for any violation in this chapter. Each day a continuing violation exists shall constitute a separate violation for purpose of assessing penalty fees.
Does anyone have anything else to add? Oh, Mrs. Frye?
Thank you, Chair. Um, the only thing that I wanted to add is do we want to go through with this since so many people are opposed to, um, the hour change? Or should we separate it as Mrs. Angeloff, uh, alluded to? Should we just have this be for fees and then, um, go through the different chapters and, um, get those lined up?
Well, I'm going to be perfectly honest. I am not, I, I don't feel comfortable taking additional fees if we aren't going to at least extend the hours to midnight or, you know, something that is, is within reason. Do I think 230 is not within reason? Yes, I agree. Um, so I, I don't know how, I didn't propose the piece of legislation, but I mean, we are talking about the fact that they, the gentleman came on and said, just as Mrs. Coburn alluded, small businesses are hurting. I'm not going to ask for additional money if we aren't going to increase. And if we want to look at the whole thing, then we want to look at the whole thing. Uh, you know, I don't think we should pick and choose, you know, I, in my opinion, he's paying for extra hours. You're absolutely right, Mrs. Angeloff. He's going to pay for extra hours. So yes, go ahead, Mrs. Angeloff.
And I don't think that should go hand in hand. I think the hours are the hours and the fees for machines are fees for the machines. I don't think that, okay, we're going to charge you, we're going to charge you $1,000 per machine and you can be open 20 hours a day. I, I think that is completely separated. And it sounds as though that's not what this is doing. We're going to raise his fee and then we're going to let him stay open more hours. That's how I'm reading it. And I, and this doesn't make any sense.
Well, I have to say that, that my comment there is based solely on the research that I did. And the hour, the amount of money that other communities charged, the only one that we're in line with as far as hours are, is Afrin. So that's where my, you know, are we, are we, you know, are we gouging then if we, you know? I actually think Norton is a happy medium, in my, in my opinion. I think Norton's is, is a happy medium. But, um, uh, but my point isn't that, isn't that, um, you know, I guess my point is, is I've provided the information and I feel like for what, we are charging a fair fee, a good, a, a decent fee, the right fee for what the hours that, that he's allotted. The other communities that had much heftier fees had much heftier hours. They were only, they only had to be closed five hours a day, based on what I, based on the information that I provided. Mr. Greer, you had your hand up.
I'm just telling, just one more thing. I'm just thinking that we're raising the fees and giving them more hours. And that's not what this is about. You're not raising the fees to give them more hours. You're raising the fees because the fees haven't been raised. Uh, they've been $200, $200 for how many years? I think that's too separate. It, it, it's, it's like you can't say, we'll let you stay open, but you're going to have to pay us $500 a thing. I, I just, that, that just looks like bad business to me. I, I, if it's going to go on, if we're going to vote on that, then I'll, you know, for sure.
My point though, my point is that, is that other, we are in line with other communities as far as fees go for the hours that we're providing. The, the communities that are charging additional fees, they have additional hours. Are they hand in hand? Not necessarily, but I'm sure that that's taken into account when the, when the community that, or the, the, the government sets the, sets the fees. I mean, we are dead on with Afrin.
Well, then there's other fees, there's other fees on this too, Mrs. DeBevick, that we can take a look at and increase too. Like Mr. Heideck said, the, uh, the, uh, penalties and things of that sort.
I completely agree.
So if you're just picking one thing, we need to look at all of it together. My suggestion is to look at all of it together.
Okay. Fair enough. Mr. Greer?
All right. So, um, hearing what Mr. Heideck said about, um, proving themselves, um, I agree and I actually respect that, that response because it's, you know, um, however, I, when the owner of that establishment came on as an individual, um, it was concerning because we're not talking about an individual, we're talking about other businesses as well. Um, and I, I didn't, you know, by bringing him on, it was, it was good to hear his perspective, but I think it, it was taken a little, um, different, um, being more like, well, you broke the law. Um, but I, I, I understand that and I, I, um, accept that. I do think, uh, Mrs. Doherty said something last time we were talking about this. Uh, she mentioned that it was hours different from surrounding communities, uh, adjacent communities like Norton. Um, they'll come here after that, you know, um, not that that's a bad thing. We, we want people to come in. Um, however, uh, if we are trying to change things to be more in line, make more money and at the same time being more in line with surrounding communities, I do think a compromise is Norton. I think that's a, that, like you said, that was a happy middle ground for myself as well. Um, when this was presented, um, I, and I, this is just me as, as a legislator, when something's presented, it's not written in stone. It's, it's meant to be countered, it's meant to be debated, it's meant to come from one perspective and meet in the middle of another. There's going to be compromises on beliefs, there's going to be compromises on everything else. Um, if, as it's written now, uh, shows no support at the end of the day, then let's not waste our time, let's look at it differently. Uh, I, when I submitted this, I submitted it at the same, in the same piece of paper, same PDF, and it came forward as one piece of legislation. I agree with Mrs. Angeloff that it, it could be two. Um, we could vote on fees and vote on time too as well. However, I didn't bring that up when it came forward because I also see it as your point, Chair. Um, if we're going to raise fees to be more in line, then let's raise our hours to be more in line. Uh, the hours to some are overreaching or too much. Um, then that's fine. What is a counter either, and you know, what is that compromise? Uh, but if, you know, if there is no compromise and there is no chance of it moving forward, uh, I, I, I don't know where to go at that point. Um, so that, that's just basically all I have to say about it.
Okay. Mr. Heideck?
Thank you, Chair. The first half fees have already been paid by these comp, by these businesses, correct?
Correct.
So if this were to go into effect, essentially they would be getting three hours because they've already paid, because we don't have anything that says any retro fees or anything like that, which is another reason I think that if we wait till closer to the second half fees are due, that gives the businesses time to prove that they can adhere to our current rules, that they can be responsible and that this is the time that they show it. And if they can't show that, then they have nobody to blame but themselves. But with their first half fees already paid, I think that even at three readings, they would end up getting a few months of extra hours that we're not prorating, because that's no, that's nowhere in this, how to prorate those months, you know, that they would be open past the current hours. Uh, so that's just what I see is that I think we, if we want to look at their hour changes and their fee schedule changes, I would think we should wait, my personal opinion, we should wait to time it closer to when the second half fees are due, because like I said, that also gives them time to show that they can be compliant. And if between now and then, you know, there's citations and citations, then we know that they can't be, for lack of a better word, compliant with what we have now, what would cause us to believe they could be compliant in the future. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you. I think that Mr. Heideck has, has offered a, a really good solution. Um, I, I, I agree with you, I, I, and Mr. Greer. I think that we should, um, we should look at, um, all of, all of it. But I believe, Mr. Flaker, correct me if I'm wrong, do they pay again in June?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find.
I'm pretty sure it's June.
I would have to come back on that.
Okay. I, I- I, I think I read June in the legislation, but I could be wrong. But, so, you know, if, if that's, if that's what we want to shoot towards, the only thing is, is I would like to have three readings and I would like for him to, for both businesses, not just him, because that, because Mr. Greer hit the nail on the head. While he came, you know, there are two businesses, so, you know, you know, it's not that we're tailoring it towards him. That was never my intention when Mr. Greer brought it to, brought it to me. But I would like to be able to have the three readings and not have emergency wording. So, you know, we can table this, but I would also like to give the gentleman enough time to prepare for, you know, the extra additional 20, well, it would be only $12,000 for the, for the second half, correct? Yes, Mr. Heidig.
83604 does say no later than June 1st for the semi-annual payment.
Okay. I thought it, I thought it was.
So, you're contemplating tabling this for now?
I'm contemplating tabling it so that, I mean, so that we can, you know, see if he is, can be in compliance. As, I would like to kind of make a verbal agreement as a whole about maybe when we want to check and, and see if they've been compliant, see if there are any violations before we, you know, bring it back to the floor.
Mrs. Miller is on the line.
I'm sorry?
Mrs. Miller is ready.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. We can, there's no tabling.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we just pull? So, I, if I recall, the person with, proposing the, requesting the legislation can withdraw the request.
Okay.
And can reintroduce it, the request to the committee, if I remember in the rules, but the rules do not allow tabling.
Okay.
So, is, uh...
Chair, can I?
Greer, I'm turning it over to you because you made the request.
Miss, Miss, I have something to say.
Go ahead, Mr. Heidig. I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you, Chair. If you were to go three readings with no emergency, well, three readings starting May 3rd would be the final reading on June 1st. So, without emergency language, it would have to be probably the end of March to allot for three readings plus any timeframe in between.
Thank you for looking that.
Additional 14 days or so?
I believe 30, is it?
Yeah, yes.
But without, if you had emergency language, you could have the first reading as early as May 3rd. The final reading would be on June 1st, and at that point, you would have to have something in the language saying they would have till June 4th, the end of that business week, because that's also Memorial Day week, Memorial Day. June 1st would actually be the Tuesday meeting. Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Frye?
You're muted.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, Chair. And I guess I'll direct this to Justin, since he submitted it, and you are going to withdraw it, correct?
I'm looking at the days, but I think, I think I am going to request to withdraw it until the 30-day mark, so it'd be three readings and no emergency wording. But that, I'll be honest, that's, if that's the case, then we're only giving, we're saying, hey, comply with the rules for 30 more days and, and we'll reintroduce this.
I wanted to say this, though, about the compliance and about the rules. When you resubmit it, are you going to change the hours to be in compliance with or have the same hours as Norton has?
So, I, I think after having this discussion and dialogue these past two times, I think that the hours are unfavorable with, with council as it sits now. So, after talking, you know, maybe talk with planning some more with the safety, then, yeah, it would be, I would, me personally, if I did resubmit it, it would be more in line with, say, Norton, how they...
And I, I believe that he has an establishment in Norton.
Yeah. Yeah, he confirmed that.
So, um, I, I just think that would be better. Those hours, I think, are better than what we have.
Which is absolutely the point of me sending everyone the fees that, of the places I could find, I could not find Coventry's. That's, that's why I wanted to send it, include the hours, so that we could look at the whole picture. Mrs. Coburn?
I think that we need to do, he needs to stay in compliance until our moratorium is up. I think one month is definitely not a sufficient example of whether he's going to be compliant. And that's what the whole moratorium was about, was to address all these things. And I think we're, we're still yet, if you're going to only wait 30 more days to reissue it, that that's not a sufficient time to see if he's, if the companies, both of them, will be compliant, not just him, but both.
With all, with all due respect, I don't believe the moratorium was set to see if those two companies were in compliance.
No, the moratorium was designed to go over the rules and to go over all of the things that Mrs. Angeloff had brought, thinking it was, because they did go over all the fees, they, they looked at the fees, the hours and everything, and were looking to change them, not knowing it was in your committee. So, I, I agree the moratorium was for something different, but it was also to give Mr., to give Trevor and that department a chance to come to grips with all the changes we were making.
Mr. Greer? I lost my train of thought. Oh, I was just going to ask you. What would you say about if I get some of the information, if Mrs. Angeloff's kind enough to share it with me, about some of the information that she acquired when she was doing the work, when she believed it was in planning? And you and I look at the entire chap, the, the entire picture and not just those two sections and, and kind of firm up all, the entire thing? Because we have 30 days to do it and we could look at the entire thing and present a, a better picture of what we're looking for. And we can continue the discussion and I'm, we'll continue to stop in and, and both establishments. Next weekend, I'm going to the other one because I can only afford $20 a week on that. So, I'm going to go to the other location next weekend and, you know, just kind of drop in. I have been driving by just to look at the parking lot, because the first thing that came to my attention when I did go on Friday night was the parking lot was packed. So, I, I have been paying attention now to the parking lot. I never did ever any other time. So, I, anytime I drive by, especially when it's off-hours, I've been paying, paying attention to the parking lot.
So, to, to answer that question, since it is going to be, have to run through our committee, we would have to be involved with it anyways.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I think that, I, well, first off, I, I am going to request that we pull this for the time being, until we can move forward with a larger picture. Before we, taking into account the feedback today, we, we can make it better. With the moratorium set into place, it's stopping new businesses, but they're wanting to redo this. I think we can press for 30 days to try to get it done. For the entire section, that might be a, a little biting off a lot. So, here's what I would suggest, that we pull this and then we try to set the deadline. We, we work with planning, we work with Mrs. Angeloff and information. And if, if planning is at the 29th day before we read, well, 10 days prior to that, so we really don't have 30 days, or we'd have to do a late request. So, 10 days to that, if, if we can get it to a point where planning says, okay, we can agree with that, I think then maybe we move forward with, but essentially, we're, we're, we have to do this anyways for the moratorium, right? I, I mean, it would have to come to us with suggestions to then change. So, maybe we can take their input, ARP input, and come to some middle ground and get that part of the moratorium done. And if they're okay with it by the time that we submit it, then, then we go ahead and, and change it, you know.
Mr. Griffin? Mr. Griffin? I feel terrible because we've literally had a very long discussion and you're on the committee and I didn't ignore you, I just was following the hands to the best of my ability.
I just put my hand up, but I was, excuse me, I was thinking of something. You know, I respect everybody's opinion, Mrs. Angeloff. I respect everybody's, you know, ideas on this. Myself personally, I am not a gambler, never been. I just couldn't afford to lose my hard-earned money, even when I was in the service, I would keep mine. But I do have experiences with the other part. And like, the bars are open till 2:30. And myself personally, I don't have any objections to 2:30 and more money, because in layman's term, if I was a gambler, I would rather leave there at 2:30 broke and sober than to leave at 2:30 and you're intoxicated. So, my, am I correct, Mr. Magis? So, you're leaving, leaving there at 2:30 broke and intoxicated, you may have some kind of destructive thing you want to do or park a lot, who knows? But for the extra money and the time, to me, I don't think it would be a reward. I think it would be compatible with Norton, and that's, that's my personal feelings toward this. So...
Thank you. Thank you for your input. I, I'm sorry if I ignored you. I'm, it's really hard for me to pay attention to whose hand is up first.
I did, I just put it up.
Okay, go on. Okay.
Mrs. Chair, just one more?
Yeah.
Just one more. I, I, and I want to, I want to thank the committee for this and Mr. Greer. But really, I think because it is under public safety, that, you know, a lot of this needs to, you know, go through or sit down and talk to Beth about that. Like I said, last year, I, I was, Stacy and I thought it was in planning because it was under codes and then come to find out it's under safety. So, I think that I, I, the notes that I have, that I actually just went through it and went up with the, not so much the, the hours, but the fees. That's what I was looking at, the different fees in there. So, I think that Mrs. Doherty can be of big help with that, since she is Director of Public Safety and that's what this is, you know, in this particular ordinance. So, she'd be a good one to sit down and talk to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Frye?
Thank you, Chair. This is my last comment also. I just wanted to say, how are we going to keep them in compliance? Is it going to be the police checking on the fact that they're actually closed at a certain hour? And also with Mr. Flaker, the, the issue I brought up to him about winnings, I think we have to check into that as well, because that's part of our ordinance and that should be reported. So, those are two areas where they need to comply before we could even think about increasing their hours. And I am not in agreement with opening at 8:00. I don't know why. I just think that 10:00 is fine and I have no problem with 2:30. I would like them to open at 1:00 on Sunday, but that's, that's my comments and it'll be up to the committee and planning and what have you for those people to get together the proposals that they want to put forward in the amended ordinance. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, moving forward, this piece of legislation is being withdrawn by Mr. Greer. We, I will be in touch with Mr. Flaker regarding the manner in which they are reporting. And I believe it falls in our ordinance under the, or in our code, under the Director of Safety to assure compliance as far as hours go, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, I think you could, it, it's fairly easy to drive by. There are either cars there or they aren't there. So, just to give you an example, when my hus, when Mick and I went the other, the other night, Mick said they have a, he didn't know why we were, what we were doing. He said, why, why, why is there a time on the door? It says, I think, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, or I'm not sure what it said. And I said, well, that's the hours that they can operate. And he said, well, there always used to be cars here all hours of the day. Well, I don't pay attention to that because I didn't know what was there. But, so, I mean, I think it's pretty easy to drive by. Now, we've been driving by and taking note and there haven't been cars there. So, I think it's pretty easy just to drive by and see there are either cars in the parking lot or there aren't cars in the parking lot. And if, you know, a, a simple knock at the door, so as far as compliance goes with hours. So, does anybody else have anything about that piece of legislation for now? Okay. Miscellaneous discussion for safety. Does anyone have any miscellaneous discussion?
Mrs. Bevick?
Yes.
Did you ever get information from Mr. Simpson? And Tom, I tried, I tried to call him two weeks ago and I saw that return call. No, it's not good.
I did get it, I did get an email, but I haven't read it. I just received it. I just received it at, I don't know, 5:30 or 5:45. And I provided a, a list of questions for Mr. Simpson and I, I attached the chief and Mrs. Doherty on the email. And following the chain of command, Officer Simpson sent it to the chief and the chief forwarded the answers to me. So, Mr., Chief Morber, do I have your permission to forward the email to
Oh, my gosh, what?
other council members? Just because I don't want to read it to them. It's not, their questions weren't, the questions were just about the titling process, because I didn't understand how titling worked. So, that, that was the base, those were the basic question. I asked four questions and that was, that, that's it. So, Chief, do I have permission to forward that to the council members?
That's totally up to you, Councilwoman Bevick, but yeah.
I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'm being respectful out of...
No, no, I get that. No, it's fine.
You, I mean, you read the questions. The questions were very, I mean, they were very appropriate, correct? I mean, they were just, how do you title the car? How, how, I mean, so those are the answers that I have. So, I did receive that and I will forward that to everyone, if that's okay with you, Chief.
No problem.
And everybody can get a little education on titling a car. So, does anyone, does anyone have anything else?
Chair, sorry, just on that note, I don't remember, and the email sent, Councilman Jabber asked if there was a list of cars, like numbers, how many cars had titles and how many cars didn't. Does that email include that?
I did not ask that question. I was just trying to get a better handle on, on the process and how, what kind of titles we acquire, how much time it takes, what kind of forms were needed to be filled out by the officer, that kind of information, just to get a handle on that portion of the process.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that would be more of a question for the law director, but, I mean, yeah, that would, I would have to consult with the law director on that one.
My thought, my thought was to pass the budget, and the contract is already in play. So soon after the, the budget passes, assuming that this is in there, then we would enter into contract and get the work done prior to spring game starting. Obviously, if this is not going to go forward, we would, I would pull that, that request.
Mrs. Miller?
Is the ordinance to enter into contract?
Yes. To enter into con- contract with Lampian Companies for the Foundation Field Lighting Upgrade Project.
With an amount?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there also a note ordinance?
Not, yeah, not, there is one, yes.
There is a note ordinance in finance.
Yeah, I think you could probably enter into contract and not execute the contract. But I don't think you could pass a note ordinance without the money budgeted to-
But the budget hasn't been adopted yet, so right now we're working on-
Correct. You, you could definitely adopt a note, um, you know, we ha- we have an interim budget. But I think you have several notes pending, and I think that cumulative amount of the notes would exceed the line items for the, I, I don't know that, though. Do, do you understand what I'm saying? Jeremy?
Yeah, yeah.
So the entering into contract, you, you could pass that because you could not execute the contract, right? You could, in the ordinance, say you cannot execute the contract. You could amend the ordinance to say the contract could not be executed until such and such a date, which I think budget has to be adopted by April 1st, is that correct?
March 31st, yeah.
March 31st, so you could add that, or you could, um, time the passage to be March 31st. But the note ordinance, I don't think you could execute the note ordinance prior to the adoption of the budget, depending on what the exact language of the note ordinance is.
Well, the note ordinance is just, um, getting council's authorization to price the notes. Um, so it would just, it, it's not paying down any sort of note out of the, for this project, it's just the initial issuance of it.
Um, my, my other question is, um, what, um, what kind of savings are we looking at for the first year here?
In terms of electric?
Yes.
Um, so, they've told us that it's anywhere between 50 and 70%. So, uh, Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's typically between around $32,000 to $35,000 on a typical year. So you, you, you're thinking $15,000 to $17,000 we'd save?
Um, and then, Mr. Greer asked a question regarding, um, whether or not by using this lighting fund, this general lighting fund, it would, it will have any impact on the plans moving forward to, um, replace the, uh, begin upgrading the, in the streets LEDs. And, um, you responded yes, and then I, I asked where exactly in the budget is that, is that allocated, or i- is it that accounted for?
Well, it won't, it won't affect it, um, and that's a short answer. Mr. Tracy can provide more updates and more specifics on the Ohio Edison program.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the Ohio Edison program, their first energy program we're looking at, uh, it's not in the budget because it doesn't cost anything.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Heidick?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, with this, uh, the Barbering Community Foundation, are they unwilling to aid, aid this project at all?
Mr. Judge?
Um, in my conversations with Mr. Little and, uh, Dr. Allen, they're willing to discuss things and, and collaborate on projects, it's very important to them. In this case, um, you know, they're, they have their own kind of constraints on budget and funding. And, you know, if you look at from our side, I would rather use the foundation and collaborate on projects where we have to expend money out of the general fund, where this is an enterprise fund. Uh, the general fund obviously is a little more susceptible to flexibility due to income taxes and everything else being pulled out of it, where this is, uh, the kind of purpose of the fund, uh, the enterprise fund is to pay for electricity and pay for upgrades, um, which could provide, not necessarily will, but could provide additional revenue with additional league and tournament play. So, long answer is, or shorter answer is yes, but not at this point. Um, and for me, in the city, I would prefer to approach them and collaborate on a project where we spend money out of the general fund versus an enterprise fund.
Well, my, my concern is if the Barbering Community Foundation is, would, would they not have, could they not give us a better rate than the interest rates on any notes? I mean, we're gonna be paying somebody back, why would we not pay ourselves back? I, please tell me if I'm misspeaking here.
Well, Mr. Flaker can, or Mrs. Miller can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we can take quote unquote a loan from the foundation. Is, is that what you mean?
Yes, and that's, that's what I'm unsure of, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I don't believe that we can, um, but financially and legally, um, Mr. Flaker or Mrs. Miller can correct me.
Um, so, Mrs. Angeloff, you had your hand up? We can't hear you. Are you gonna try again? Nope. Sorry. Mrs. DeBevick?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Flaker, is this, is this the purpose of this fund?
Mr. Flaker, are you there?
Sorry, I had my stuff muted. Um, I would have to verify on the ordinance, but the ordinance states, if I'm remembering correctly, it's the use, uh, general lighting for the public safety of, um, and public use, um, for the residents and people coming and going through Barberton. So, you, yeah, I mean, it'd be, I would have to double check on the ordinance, but I would have to say yes, because the ball fields can be used by anyone, um, anyone, any resident could be part of those leagues that partake down there at the ball field. Um, not only that, I do know they have the walking trail there as well that will help light, um, with those lights would help light that path for anyone that may be walking that trail around that field.
But they aren't on all the time, are they?
I'm not sure, I, I don't drive past it every night, so I'm not sure. I don't think they are.
I want to ask, is there like a left turn towards you?
If there's any activity on the fields, they are on at least until 11, yeah. Um, Nina, did you manage to get on the phone?
Yes, I'm on the phone, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead with your question.
If we would, if we would request for a grant, can we pay the loan down, the note down with the grant?
Um, I had talked to the foundation about that, and I don't know if they are permitted to provide grant funding to pay debt service. Um, you know, I, I don't know too many, um, foundations that pay on debt service for a project.
Thank you.
That, thank you. Uh, Mr. Greer, I see your hand.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Chair.
Just, I'm sorry, but that's exactly what they did for the high school.
That's what I thought.
Go ahead, Mr. Greer.
Um, thank you, Chair. I just did some quick math, just 'cause I, I asked the question earlier, um, on how long it would take to pay off, or, or maybe I just, anyways, I did the math on it, if, if it, on the low side, say we save 50% on the lighting, it'll take us about 13 years to pay this off with the current activities, uh, that we have there. If, if my math is correct, it, it would be, it would save, let's say, $15,000 a year out of a, a $30,000 on the low end of the cost, it'd be about 13, anyway, 15 to 10 years, uh, payoff. If we stay at the current, uh, the current price, I guess, I guess, and if it brings in more people, that we could cut that down even more. Um, I, I, which leads me to another question. Can the activities in the fee leagues, now all the fees that we collect there go towards the lighting fund, or to pay back a note, i- is that able to cross funds like that?
Pardon me?
So, the fees that we get through the leagues, uh, when we bring on more leagues, if the lighting's, one of the things was said, that it was gonna, it could bring more people, uh-
Right.
-to use the facility, which in turn is more revenue for whatever fund that goes to, can that, those funds be used to pay down the lighting note?
They wouldn't be able to, um, just for the main fact, you're issuing a debt and paying the debt back using enterprise bonds, and you can't make special revenue funds, that, that's where the fees would go, into the enterprise funds. So, I, I would have to look into, well, a little more, I mean, it might be possible, but it, it might be going into a gray area that-
Yeah.
Wouldn't be possibly good for the city.
I guess, then I'd say, would, what can that, those extra funds be used for? Because we would have to use extra funds to make this beneficial. W- would it go to strictly updating all the other parks, like the beautification fund? I- is that what fund all those fees go into?
Well, I mean, one of the things that you would look at, um, and the mayor could talk on this more, but one thing that it would do is the, the sports operating complex fund. We usually are transferring anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 a year to that fund. Um, between the lighting upgrades and, um, potential additional fees, it would make that fund truly self-sufficient, um, for one of the first times since, I think we started this, the, the sports operating complex fund. Um, we wouldn't have to transfer any money into it, um, which in turn would free up money to go towards, into the income tax fund to be transferred into possibly general fund a- and whatnot. Um, then the additional fees that could go into it, um, could only be used for the sports operating complex, so it'd be upgrading the facilities there, upgrading the fields or, or whatnot, it would have to be used at that complex.
Okay, awesome, thank you for that answer.
That's a good point, uh, Mr. Flaker, we do, uh, transfer a lot of money over there, uh, each year, and I can't recall of a year where we didn't transfer some money.
I know it's not the, being on parks, I always notice that the sports complex never paid for itself. Mr. Heidick?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Councilor Angeloff there, it's maybe something we need to pursue is a grant request to the foundation to help out with this. I think that's a fantastic idea, ev- every little bit would help, you know, it is called the Foundation Fields. Thank you.
Mrs. Frye? You're muted.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to ask, um, if the savings from putting up the LED lights, if they actually did, um, garner $15,000 to $17,000 a year, would that money go back into the revenue fund that is in the enterprise funds to pay for the electric bills?
No, it goes into parks, or it goes into the general fund, but yes, it can be used to pay the electric bills, but it cannot go back into the, um, enterprise fund, they can't cross. Mr. Flaker just explained that.
But we would be paying less out of that fund for the electric cost, therefore saving that amount in that, that line item.
Mrs. DeBevick?
Um, thank you. This is for Mr. Tracy, probably. Um, I know we've discussed in, um, several meetings over the course of the last several years, um, you know, we've had traffic lights out and things, and just the age of our traffic lights, and, um, you know, difficulty getting parts because of the age of our traffic lights. Is that correct? Am I correct with that statement?
I mean, I don't know that we've had any issues as far as not being able to, you know, recondition things, I mean, obviously, um, there are some, some, some aging traffic signals in our, in our system, but, um, throughout some of the, some of the big projects we've been doing with AMATs and safety funding and stuff, a lot of those are getting, are gonna get changed out on Worcester Road, and, um, I don't know that, um, we're at a point where we're, we're worried about some type of huge failure or something, but at some point, you know, it, we will be utilizing some of those funds for some upgrades in those areas, but there's a, there's a lot of times, there's, there's funding for traffic control systems.
Okay, I guess, I guess, I feel like, I, I thought just recently there was a light out on State Street and Robinson for, and I think it was during the summer for three, two weeks, and they ended up taking pieces from a light downtown, which was then out for two months, and it was, from what I understood, correct me if I'm wrong, was that we couldn't get the parts, or it needed reconditioned, it was too old to get the parts, or there was something behind that, or, I, I guess, I guess my point is that I believe when we, when we discussed this ordinance for the general lighting fund, um, and I believe it's even in the minutes of, of the meeting, and I'm gonna ask, uh, Laura to, to pull those for me, that it was to pay the electric bill for the ci- for the city, and that was the discussion that we had, and I'm just concerned that we have other aging, um, other aging lighting in the city, um, that I believe this money should be paid, used to pay for, because we can acquire a grant from the Barbering Community Foundation to pay for lighting at the Barbering Community Foundation, but we cannot acquire a grant from the Barbering Community Foundation to replace traffic lights, or to, for everyday operating costs. This is, the lights at the Foundation Field, don't get me wrong, I think they're very important, but they're the bread and butter, they're the bread and butter of, you know, you, you don't need to have bread and butter with every meal, and so that's, that's my opinion. I believe that what, what I sold to residents when I discussed the lighting fee was not ball field lights, that's, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Do I have a motion to call for it?
I'll make a motion to call for it.
Okay. Do I have a second? I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No. No.
Thank you. Okay, um, do we have any other miscellaneous discussion for utilities? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mrs. DeBevick.
I will second that.
Thank you, Ms. Frye.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering why Mr. Greer made a motion.
What, you can't-
My apologies, yeah, I can't make a motion in this committee.
Okay, we have to go back. Do I have a motion to call for this ordinance? That would be between Carol Frye, Carla DeBevick, and myself.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Carol. I'll second it. All in favor? Right? And, and Carla, you're still no.
Correct.
Correct? Thank you, we, we've corrected that. Okay, back to miscellaneous discussion. It's, uh, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. DeBevick was first. Carol seems frozen, I'm going to accept hers as second. We are adjourned at 7:43.
Okay, thanks. All right, we're going into finance and personnel with Mrs. Frye.
Okay, it is 7:44, Monday, March 8th, we are meeting virtually. And we, I am calling the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting to order. Um, all members of the committee are present, as well as all council people, and those noted on my agenda. Um, the requests, we have several requests for legisla- no, we only have one request for legislation, and then we have first readings on, um, several note ordinances. Uh, the request for legislation is a letter from Mayor Judge requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Lampian Companies for the Foundation Field Lighting Upgrade Project. Um, it is ordinance number 22, 2021. I think you all have a copy of that, are there any questions about this? We've basically been discussing it in Mrs. Coburn's meeting, so are there any other comments or questions? At this time? No? Therefore, do I have, um, a motion to call for this?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mrs., Mr. Medges. Do I have a second?
And I'll second it. I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Angeloff, seconded by Mrs. Angeloff. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. It passes. All right, uh, the committee legislation that is on the agenda for this evening is ordinance number, uh, 12, 2021, operating in capital budget. This is an ordinance of, to, for the cap, for passing, um, our capital budget, which we will be discussing again at the end of this meeting. Um, we will have a final reading and, before the, the, the date that it is due for passage, which it has to be passed. The second, um, ordinance that's on the agenda for the night is number 17, 2021, this is a note ordinance for the Ninth Street Improvement Program. This is, um, this is the note ordinance in the amount of $540,000. And we are going, the budget provides for $145,000 paydown, um, or reduction in principal on this particular note, and this is from 2019 when we did, um, make the improvements at Ninth Street. Any questions? Okay, the second note ordinance for this evening is ordinance number 18, 2021, this note ordinance is meter reading system replacement. Um, this ordinance is for, uh, $325,000. In the proposed budget, uh, we have provided for a $25,000 paydown on the original note ordinance for $350,000, this is for the meter reading system. Do I have any questions about this piece of legislation? No? Okay, the next note ordinance is ordinance number 19, 2021, uh, note ordinance for the Fifth Street Northeast, Lincoln Avenue Stormwater Project. Um, this particular ordinance, I mean, note issuance was in the amount of $400,000, and the proposed budget provides for a 2,000, I mean, $200,000 paydown, uh, reduction in the principal, therefore, we are going to, uh, call for the issuance and sale of notes, um, in the anticipation of the issuance of bonds in the amount of $200,000. Do I have any questions about that? Okay, the next ordinance is ordinance number 20, 2021, this is a note ordinance, Street and Road Improvement Project. This is for the street repaving program, and, um, it was originally in the amount of $315,000, the first issue of notes, and it is in the budget to pay down this issuance in the amount of $115,000. And therefore, we are calling for an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds in the amount of $200,000. Any questions on that? Okay, the next ordinance that is going to be on the agenda, uh, on the agenda for tonight is ordinance number 21, 2021, this is a note ordinance for the trickling filter system at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, this was the, um, this original issuance was in the amount of $150,000, and in the budget, we are providing for a paydown of $25,000, therefore, the new issuance will be in the amount of $125,000. Any questions on that? The next and final ordinance is, um, note ordinance for the lighting improvements to recreational facilities. This is the, um, the note ordinance that we've been discussing all evening regarding the LED lighting at the four baseball fields at the Foundation Fields. Um, this is a new note ordinance, therefore, um, the amount of it is for $220,000. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Frye?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't, yes, Mrs. DeBevick?
Did we determine that we were able to move forward with this piece of legislation, even though we don't have the budget passed?
I believe so, as long as we don't sign the contract- I believe so, as long as we don't sign the contract, the, oh, your thing with the note ordinance.
Yeah.
It'd be all of them.
I remember.
We, we, all the rest of the notes are being issued, right?
Yes. Yes.
Not sure how this one would be any different than the other ones. Are, okay.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Miller. Um. Does anybody else have any questions about these? Mr. Heidich?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I would like to see some sort of, um, grant request come to the council to aid in this. Um, I'll, I'll help write it myself if need be, but this is something that I think, I really, really, really believe the foundation should have some sort of hand in this. And I wholeheartedly agree with Councilor Angelo that a grant request should, is in order to assist this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heidich. I agree with you that we should apply for a grant to help with this, to help for the payment of the notes that we're taking out.
Uh, Chair?
Yes?
I just printed a grant request to City Council, uh, for permission, that'll be, uh, I'll send that over to, uh, Lori here soon.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other comment, oh, Mrs. Angelo?
Yes, um, and, and all I want to say, we can ask for a grant every year. I mean, we can ask every year for a grant that will help pay the note down. Um, you know, every little bit might help, you know? Um, I don't expect the whole two hundred and twenty thousand coming from the foundation because that would leave other organizations without any money. But there's no reason that every year we can do a grant and, um, be able to pay down that note with that grant. So that's, that's the plan.
Thank you. Mrs. DeBevick?
Thank you. I guess, I guess the point of my, um, the point of my email, and it, it, maybe it was the time of evening that I wrote it after a long day's work, but on Friday, I did speak with Mr. Little, and he did, um, he did say that definitely this was something that fell under the umbrella of what the foundation would be able to do, um, based on their, originally the way it was set up. Um, he felt confident that after the year, after the high schools paid for, um, bigger grants will be possible, um, which happens to be next year. Um, he never committed to me, we definitely had a conversation that, um, it was an informal conversation. He indicated that some members of the, of the foundation weren't sure if they were going to grant next year, or weren't necessarily for sure they were in favor of granting anything next year. Um, just to, um, ensure that there's not a huge drop in the market based on the current economy. Um, you know? But we had a conversation and, and he definitely felt like if City Council and the mayor reached out to, um, to the foundation, that they would definitely help, probably be willing to help with a big chunk of it. They just can't do it right this minute. And, um, so that, that's where my creativity came from. You know, if we're only saving fifteen thousand dollars, not only, but if we're saving fifteen thousand dollars a year for, you know, the next two years, you know, if we waited the two years, then it, if the foundation has the possibility to, to pay for all of it, then we don't pay any interest and we don't, we don't owe anything. And it, and there's very little that the foundation can do when it comes to, when it comes to aiding the city with certain expenses. And that is an area that the foundation can definitely help. So that was, that was the intention of my email. Um, it was, it was to prompt a discussion. It was, you know, simply for that. And, um, you know, I, so I just, I wanted to clear the air about that and let everybody know that, that, that's where I was coming from. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, everyone who made comments tonight, and I agree with you, Mrs. DeBevick, but I think one of the reasons that they're asking for a note is the uncertainty with interest rates. And it probably is a good time to, um, you know, do this in, in that respect because interest rates are extremely low. We don't know what that will be next year, we don't know what the foundation's position will be next year. But I am on board for going to them for a grant, um, to help with the expense for the Foundation Fields. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I just have one other comment that I wanted to make, and I, it's more of a question just for us to think about. Do we think that if we already agree to pay for some, already agree to do something, that we have less of a chance of receiving a grant? Because obviously, whether they give us the grant or not, we've committed to doing it. That's my other concern, that we put the horse before the, or put the carriage before the horse. You know what I mean? That, are they going to be willing to give us a grant if we've already committed to doing it, regardless of whether or not we have the grant? You know, that, that's, that's just, that's just a thought.
Mrs. Angelo?
Um, Mrs. DeBevick? Mrs. DeBevick, I don't think we're going to go to the foundation and ask for a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant because they just don't do that. And it puts other organizations that are asking for a grant, um, a small grant, it kind of puts them in a bind. I, I, I don't think I've ever seen, other than maybe for the schools, um, them giving that kind of money. What I'm saying, um, is that we do need that lighting, um, we're going to save that money and just apply for, you know, twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand grants every year and pay back that loan. I don't think we should sit and wait a couple of years to see what the foundation's going to do because of the interest rates being this slow. And I think in those couple of years, you know, possibility, we can save thirty to thirty-four thousand dollars. So, um, they would nev-, I would, I would have to say, I'm not going to say never, but they would not approve a grant for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for one particular, um, thing that the city's asking for. So, um, I think this is the right time to do this. And, um, I think that, uh, you know, by chipping away, um, every year of the foundation, that we might be able to get smaller, um, grants from them to pay for this. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Heidich? Mr. Heidich?
Thank you, Chair. I, I agree with Councilor Angelo. I think the passing, the passing of issuance of notes shows that we are serious and committed to upgrading the fields. And a small portion yearly shows that the dedication is there. And I, I understand Mrs. DeBevick's, uh, concern that once we pass it, we would be on the hook. But I think at some point, some projects, once they show, once people show that they are serious, uh, when, you know, certain people volunteered to help, uh, Reverend Cheatham clear out that property, it showed initiative that things could be done in the future, that we are willing to put in the work. I think the note passage shows that, and I think we actually stand a better chance at smaller grants, showing that we're serious. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greer?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to point this out again. I, I said this in utilities, but, um, so if we did this for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we wouldn't save money for about fifteen years if we just paid off the note. Um, or until it was paid off. Uh, or we wouldn't save money, we wouldn't break even in, for anywhere from ten to fifteen years. However, if we did do the grant, um, like Mrs. Angelo was saying and Mr. Heidich was talking about, um, for every time, let's just say it was smaller grants, like they said, chipping it away. If we requested a grant every year for thirty thousand, that would knock two years off of that loan. So it, just putting it in perspective, I'm doing math here on the paper. Um, so, I mean, I, I like the, the foundation idea. But we would not save money for upwards of a decade. We wouldn't break even until that was, it made itself back, till it paid itself back.
Uh, Chairwoman Fry?
Yes.
So, my only comments were, you know, this, lighting upgrade is very important, it's past overdue. We have a designated revenue source to pay for it. And I'd rather approach the foundation for something like, if we're talking about parks, for example, something where they can help us redo a tennis court or a basketball court. You know, if you've been in our parks, we still have pavilions that were made in the Works Progress Administration. Uh, we have tennis courts that cannot be played on, and those would be paid for out of the general fund. So the general fund, as I said, is the one that's kind of a lot more susceptible to having ups and downs and flexibility in terms of, uh, the amount of income tax coming in. So I'd rather approach them for help for projects that we would pay for out of the general fund versus a designated revenue source. I understand the payback period, and, uh, as I mentioned, I did just print out a, a request to approach the foundation. Uh, but this could lead to, the, the timing's right, because this could lead to a lot more play, tournaments and leagues. People have been cooped up, um, it's way overdue, and I'd hate to lose teams. A lot of times when teams or leagues go somewhere, they stay there until there's a reason not to be there. They don't kind of shop around too often, that I'm familiar with. So I'd rather attract as many as we can and keep them here. And I think this lighting upgrade is a, a, a big step forward in that, that avenue. And we've been doing some upgrades on the fields themselves and the parks, uh, with the batter's boxes. Um, we put out some stuff on the, the fence the other year, uh, with the retention pond, all those things. And we have some other plans that we've been discussing internally, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anyone else have any other comments or questions? Regarding this? Um. Do you think that we should wait till next week for the budget report? Because we're going to have, uh, from Mr. Flaker, or do you want to do it and then have our budget meeting? Show a hand.
I usually don't go to sleep till about four AM, so I don't.
That I know. So do you want to do that? I make a pardon?
I don't have a problem either way.
I don't either.
Okay, Mr. Flaker, would you like to do the, um, budget report?
I can. Anyone ready to go? All right, starting with the healthcare fund, the revenues were four hundred and six thousand, expenditures three hundred and eighty thousand. Our net year-to-date is seventeen thousand. Move on to the city income tax fund. The estimates for the month of February were nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, actual seven hundred and fifty-three thou-, just shy of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand. It makes our actual for the year one million five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That's under our estimate by about three hundred and twenty-five thousand, or seventeen point five percent almost. Um, just for a comparison, the same period last year, our actual was about nine hundred and forty-five thousand. Um. Part of the decrease, um, I still feel is the transition from CCA to Rita. Um. People are getting used to, or haven't filed their taxes yet. Um, businesses are getting ready to probably get all their stuff filed for the end of the year here shortly with Rita. Um, so I, I'm going to, while yes, I'm concerned at the number right now. I, I'm not overly concerned, I'd like to see where we stand after income tax season's over. Um, so I, I'd like to see what the month of April and May brings. See if we get leveled back out. Um, I do have concerns because talking with other people, I do hear other entities are down, income tax, as, as well. Um, there are some places that I've heard is about, they, their actuals are coming in about twenty-five percent less than what they're predicting, so, um. I'm going to keep monitoring this, um, and, and checking in on it. And like I said, I, I like to see a clearer picture. Um, I'm hoping by, after the tax season's over, after Rita's able to collect what, what they can from everyone and everyone gets their stuff filed, um, I'm hoping to see that number, um, shrink a little bit. Uh, and we did then this month transfer another million dollars to the general fund. So moving on to the statement of cash receipts and dispersment for all the funds. Few funds, funds in the negative. First fund in the negative is the FEMA fund, uh, that's the one that we're going to be paying out the stormwater projects for, buying those properties on Fourteenth Street and, and that. Um, and that's due to us going to get reimbursed one, once we pay out the expenses. Other, next fund in the negative is the CDBG fund, that's the HUD grant. Once again, that's a federal grant program that they'll reimburse us for once we pay out expenses. The next fund in the negative is the Norton Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. Um, that is the one where all those, where we have the project through OWDA, OPWC, for the construction out in Norton, for the sanitary sewers out in Norton. Once we expend the money, um, on those loans, a lot, with, with OWDA, once we expend the money, they'll reimburse us for it. Um, and then the other fund in the negative is the Internal Cost Allocation Fund. That is the fund that a lot of our chargebacks for, to departments go to. Um. That's in the negative due to the encumbrances outstanding of almost a hundred and fifty thousand. It's tied up in two POs, one for the fuel, one for, uh, radio access fees. Once we charge back departments every month for the fuel, that will help the revenues get boosted in that fund. And as well as, once we pay the radio access fees to Summit County, we will also charge back to the departments for that, which will help with that negative balance. Looking at the last three months of activities, the general fund went up slightly from the month of January by about two hundred and fifty thousand. Due to our receipts being up, dispersments being down. Looking at the special revenue funds, they have stayed about the same. Enterprise funds went up. Um, you'll notice that enterprise funds went up about nine hundred thousand. It went up due to the fact that the dispersments were down. Um, if you look at previous months, we had over a million dollars in dispersments. Last month, it was actually under a million dollars. Um, and then also the encumbrances went down. We went from almost three point five million in encumbrances in the month of January, down to three million in, in encumbrances. And then all other funds, you'll notice that went down. That has to deal with a few things. We took out the PO for the first three months because we're under the temporary budget right now. So we took out the PO for the first three months of healthcare to Summit County. We also have those two previous POs that I discussed on the fuel and the radio access fees, which are all drawing down. All of those, we'll get the money made back up, um, once we spend the money and we charge back the expenses to the departments for the revenue to go in there. Comparing February twenty twenty to February of twenty twenty-one, I do want to point out on the top of the one column, uh, it, both columns are listed as twenty twenty. That one column should be twenty twenty-one. Um. But looking at that, you'll notice the unencumbered cash balance is up in the general fund. Most of that has to deal with the CARES Act money that we received, that we were able to use police and fire wages on. Special revenue funds are, is down slightly. Enterprise funds is about the same. All other funds is down slightly from last year. Um, but like I said, you notice though that the encumbrance is outstanding for the all other funds is up also by four hundred and some thousand, so that fund is actually up a little bit after you take out those, um, encumbrances outstanding because we'll get, we'll charge back departments for that, and it will bring that up. Uh, the unencumbered cash balance overall for all the funds, um, is actually up by about three point five million. Once again, a lot of that has to deal with the CARES Act money from last year. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Does anyone have any questions for Jeremy? Mrs. DeBevick?
I have a question unrelated to the, um, well, I have a question and a comment unrelated to the, um, I have a question unrelated to the um, well, I have a question and a comment unrelated to the um report that Mr. Flaker just gave us. If I'm allowed. I I pulled up ordinance number one thirty-eight twenty eighteen, um, the lighting ordinance. And in paragraph three, and I just remember this so vividly because I received so many emails and phone calls about this. It says, whereas the council desires to establish a general lighting utility for the purpose of paying the costs of constructing, operating, maintaining and repairing all of the existing and future streetlights and traffic signals throughout the city of Barberton. That is the specific language in the ordinance.
Yeah, it says it throughout it, I believe, too.
So I, Mrs. Miller, legally, can we use this fund for that?
I, is that a signed ordinance, do you know?
Um, yes, it's on the codified ordinances.
Yeah, I would just want to make sure that that's the exact ordinance that was enacted.
Okay, yeah, I got it off of a mayor legal or ma- So I I don't know. I don't have the actual ordinance right in front of me, other than I just looked it up in our, you know, codified ordinances.
Jeremy or Mayor, do you have any other recollection of a of a that having different language than that?
I just pulled up the ordinance on the city's website and that's what the city website says as well. I mean, under, under that wording, I would question if we can use it for that. Um, because by the next paragraph does say public lighting, it does say in that paragraph that it establishes general lighting for the purpose of paying the cost of, and it does refers to streetlights and traffic signals.
Well, I'm I'm gonna have to I'm gonna have to look at that tomorrow then.
Okay, thank you. Are we voting on these pieces of legislation this evening?
The ordinances, I mean, the note ordinances, is that what you're saying? No, well, we're going to, it's really gonna be readings. We're not going to pass them. There's gonna be, there's gonna be two readings.
Okay, I I was not aware that there were gonna be two readings on that, so that's why I I wanted to bring that up now. As I didn't want us to vote.
Probably going to be two because they have to be passed in time to do the paperwork and what have you to issue the new notes.
Okay, I I just wanted to make sure we weren't voting on that this evening.
No. Well, I I'm gonna suggest that we not vote on either of them for adoption until I have a chance to look at that. We won't be doing that for a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Miller, yes. Um, I had a question today. I I was wondering, you know, when we're talking about general lighting and and what actually is paid out of that fund. Where do we pay for um the Christmas lights when we have them up at the lake? What what fund does that come out of? Is that a parks fund or is that a general lighting fund?
It's a parks fund.
It's a parks fund? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Don. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments for finance? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
This is Fry. We have to vote on the acceptance of the finance report.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I called for it and we didn't have the no names. I'm sorry. All right, um, do I have a motion to call for uh the budget report?
I'll make a motion.
I will second.
Motion made by Mrs. Seconded by Mrs. Angeloff. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now I'll take Carla's motion to adjourn. And do I have a second?
And I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Angeloff and we are adjourned at sixteen PM.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we're running late. Let's just get right into this meeting here. Okay, this is a regular legislative meeting of the Barberton City Council. Today is Monday, March eighth, twenty twenty-one. The time is eight seventeen PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation by Mr. Griffin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we gather here today at this meeting, we ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to make decisions that will be pleasing to you. Help us to be able to discuss the matters at hand in a reasonable way. God, let this meeting be productive and as should be the case in all areas of our lives. Help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds as we do the work set before us. And last but not least, bless our men and women and our armed forces and our first responders. Watch over them wherever they may be. Let us all say amen.
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 Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Mrs. Angeloff.
Here.
Mrs. Coburn.
Here.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Here.
Mrs. Fry.
Here.
Mr. Greer.
Present.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Heidig.
Here.
Mr. Jaber.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the regular legislative meeting. Mrs. DeBevick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as presented.
Thank you. And Mr. Heidig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would second that motion to, excuse me, to approve the minutes of the regular legislative session.
Thank you. It was moved by Mrs. DeBevick, seconded by Mr. Heidig to approve the minutes of the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are adopted. Approval of the, approval of the finance report for the month of February twenty twenty-one, as presented. Mrs. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the approval, I mean, for the acceptance of the finance department report for the month of February twenty twenty-one, as presented.
Thank you. And Mrs. DeBevick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mrs. Fry's motion.
Thank you. It was moved by Mrs. Fry, seconded by Mrs. DeBevick to approve the finance report for the month of February twenty twenty-one, as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Financial report for February is adopted. Petitions and claims.
There are none.
Matters requested.
They've all been emailed.
Thank you. And citizens addressing council.
There are none.
First reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number fourteen twenty twenty-one, presented by Mrs. DeBevick, to enter into a contract with Orianna House. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a one-year contract with Orianna House Incorporated for the two thousand and twenty-one community corrections contract and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. DeBevick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section five point one oh of the Barberton Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second Mrs. DeBevick's motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. DeBevick, seconded by Mr. Greer to suspend the rule as required by section five point one zero of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mrs. Fry.
Yes.
Mrs. Angeloff.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Coburn.
Yes.
Motion to adopt, Mrs. DeBevick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number fourteen twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. And Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to second the motion for adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. DeBevick and seconded by Mr. Greer to adopt ordinance number fourteen twenty twenty-one. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Coburn.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Yes.
Jaber. Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mrs. Angeloff.
Yes.
Mrs. Fry.
Yes.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Ordinance number fifteen twenty twenty-one, presented by Mrs. Angeloff. Two thousand twenty-one residential demolition program. To enter into a contract with Butcher and Son. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Butcher and Son excavating ink. The lowest and or best bidder for the two thousand twenty-one residential demolition program in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars per dwelling. The demolition of residential structures using CDBG grant and or general funding and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Angeloff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section five point one zero of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
Thank you. And Mrs. Coburn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second that motion on suspension.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Angeloff, seconded by Mrs. Coburn to suspend the rule as required by section five point one zero of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Yes.
Mrs. Fry.
Yes.
Mrs. Coburn.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mrs. Angeloff.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Motion to adopt, Mrs. Angeloff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one be adopted as presented.
And Mrs. Coburn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second the motion for adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Angeloff and seconded by Mrs. Coburn to adopt ordinance number fifteen twenty twenty-one. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Angeloff.
Yes.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Heidig.
Yes.
Mrs. Coburn.
Yes.
Mrs. Fry.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Yes.
Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Ordinance sixteen twenty twenty-one has been ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-one, presented by Mrs. Fry. Note ordinance, Ninth Street Northeast Improvement Program. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed five hundred and forty thousand dollars of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying cost of improving Ninth Street Northeast, reconstructing, resurfacing, paving, grading, draining, constructing curbs, gutters and driveway aprons, installing storm sewers, realigning intersections and making other improvements as designed in the plans approved or to be approved by council and declaring an emergency. Fiscal officer certification to the council of the city of Barberton, Ohio. As fiscal officer of the city of Barberton, Ohio, I certify in connection with your proposed issue of not to exceed five hundred and forty thousand dollars of notes. Notes to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, the bonds for the purpose of paying costs of improving Ninth Street Northeast by reconstructing, resurfacing, paving, grading, draining, constructing gutters and driveway aprons, installing storm sewers, realigning intersections and making other improvements as designated in the plans approved or to be approved by the council, the improvement, number one. As the estimated life or period of usefulness of the improvement is at least five years. Two, the estimated maximum maturity of the bonds calculated in accordance with section one three three point two zero of revised code is fifteen years, being my estimate of the life or period of usefulness of the improvement. If notes in anticipation of the bonds are outstanding later than the last day of December of the fifth year following the year of issuance of the original issue of notes, the period of excess of those five years shall be deducted from that maximum maturity of the bonds. Thus, the maximum maturity of the bonds is fourteen years. Three, the maximum maturity of the notes is April twenty-first, two thousand thirty-six, which is twenty years from April twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, the date of issuance of the original notes issued for this purpose. Dated February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Jeremy Flaker, Director of Finance, City of Barberton. Ordinance eighteen twenty twenty-one, presented by Mrs. Fry. Meter read system replacement project. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of acquiring and installing advanced radio metering system equipment to be used in connection with the municipal sewer and water system, together with all necessary opportunesses thereto and declaring an emergency. Fiscal officer certification to the council of the city of Barberton, Ohio. As fiscal officer of the city of Barberton, Ohio, I certify in connection with your proposed issue of not to exceed three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of notes to be issued in anticipation of the issue of bonds. to be issued in anticipation of the issue of bonds, the bonds for the purpose of paying costs of acquiring and installing advanced radio metering systems, equipment to be used in connection with the municipal sewer and water systems, together with all necessary opportunances therfor the improvement, number one. The estimated life or period of usefulness of the improvement is at least five years. Two, the estimated maximum maturity of the bonds calculated in accordance with section one three three point two zero of the Revised Code is ten years, being my estimate of the life or period of usefulness of the improvement. If notes in anticipation of the bonds are outstanding later than the last day of December of the fifth year following the year of issuance of the original issue of notes, the period in excess of those five years shall be deducted from the maximum maturity of the bonds. Three, the maximum maturity of the notes is April twentieth, two thousand and thirty-two, which is fifteen years from April twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, the date of issuance of the original notes issued for this purpose. Dated February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Jeremy Flaker, Director of Finance, City of Barberton, Ohio. Ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-one presented by Mrs. Frye. Title, the note ordinance, Fifth Street Northeast, Lincoln Avenue Storm Water Project. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed thousand dollars of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying facilities along with Fifth Street Northeast and Lincoln Avenue, together with all opportunances therof thereto and declaring an emergency. Fiscal officer's certificate to the Council of the City of Barberton, Ohio. As fiscal officer of the City of Barberton, Ohio, I certify in connection with your proposed issuance of not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars of notes. The notes to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, the bonds for the purpose of paying costs of constructing storm water drainage facilities along Fifth Street Northeast and Lincoln Avenue, together with all opportunances thereto the improvement. One, the estimated life or period of usefulness of the improvement is at least five years. Two, the estimated maximum maturity of the bonds calculated in accordance with section one three three point two zero of the Revised Code is forty years. If notes in anticipation of the bonds are outstanding later than the last day of December of the fifth year following the year of issuance of the original issue of notes, the period in excess of those five years shall be deducted from the maximum maturity of the bonds. Three, the maximum maturity of the notes is April seventeenth, two thousand and thirty-nine, which is twenty years from April seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, the date of issuance of the original notes issued for this purpose. Dated February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Jeremy Flaker, Director of Finance, City of Barberton, Ohio. Ordinance twenty twenty twenty-one presented by Mrs. Frye. Note ordinance, Street and Road Improvement Project. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of improving streets and roads in the city by resurfacing, paving, and making other improvements as designated in the plans approved or to be approved by council and declaring an emergency. Fiscal officer's certificate to the Council of the City of Barberton, Ohio. As fiscal officer of the City of Barberton, Ohio, I certify in connection with your purpose with your proposed issue of not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars of notes, the notes to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, the bonds for the purpose of paying costs of improving streets and roads in the city by resurfacing, paving, and making other improvements as designated in the plans or plans approved or to be approved by council, the improvement. Number one, the estimated life or period of usefulness of the improvement is at least five years. Two, the estimated maximum maturity of the bonds calculated in accordance with section one three three point two zero of the Revised Code is fifteen years. If notes in anticipation of the bonds are outstanding later than the last day of December of the fifth year following the year of issuance of the original issue of notes, the period in excess of those five years shall be deducted from the maximum maturity of the bonds. Three, the maximum maturity of the notes is April seventeenth, two thousand and thirty-nine, which is twenty years from April seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, the date of issuance of the original notes issued for this purpose. Dated February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Jeremy Flaker, Director of Finance, City of Barberton, Ohio. Ordinance twenty-three twenty twenty-one presented by Mrs. Frye. Note ordinance, Trickle-ing Filter System at Wastewater Treatment Plant. In accordance with with accordance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of reconstructing and improving the trickle-ing filter system at the Municipal Wastewater Treatment Plant, together with all opportunances thereto and declaring an emergency. Fiscal officer's certificate to the Council of the City of Barberton, Ohio. As fiscal officer of the City of Barberton, Ohio, I certify in connection with your proposed issue of not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of notes, the notes to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, the bonds for the purpose of paying costs of reconstructing and improving the trickle-ing filter system at the Municipal Wastewater Treatment Plant, together with all opportunances thereto the improvement. One, the estimated life or period of usefulness of the improvement is at least five years. Two, the estimated maximum maturity of the bonds calculated in accordance with section one three three point two zero of the Revised Code is forty years, being my estimate of the life or period of usefulness of the improvement. If notes in anticipation of the bonds are outstanding later than the last day of December of the fifth year following the year of issuance of the original issue of notes, the period in excess of those five years shall be deducted from that maximum maturity of the bonds. Three, the maximum maturity of the notes is April fifteenth, two thousand and forty, which is twenty years from April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, the date of issuance of the original notes issued for this purpose. Dated February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Jeremy Flaker, Director of Finance, City of Barberton, Ohio. Ordinance twenty-two twenty twenty-one presented by Mrs. Frye. Note ordinance, Lighting Improvements to the Recreational Facilities. An ordinance, an ordinance providing for the issuance of the sale of not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of installing LED lighting improvements at the recreational facilities in the city, together with all opportunances thereto and declaring an emergency. Fiscal officer's certificate to the Council of the City of Barberton, Ohio. As fiscal officer of the City of Barberton, Ohio, I certify in connection with your purpose issue of not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of notes. The notes to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds, the bonds for the purpose of paying costs of installing LED lighting improvements at recreational facilities in the city, together with all opportunances thereto the improvement. Number one, the estimated life or period of usefulness of the improvement is at least five years. Two, the estimated maximum maturity of the bonds calculated in accordance with section one three three point two zero of the Revised Code is thirty years, being my estimate of the life or period of usefulness of the improvement. If notes in anticipation of the bonds are outstanding later than the last day of December of the fifth year following the year of issuance of the original issue of notes, the period in excess of those five years shall be deducted from the maximum maturity of the bonds. Three, the maximum maturity of the notes is two hundred and forty months from their date of issuance. Dated February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Jeremy Flaker, Director of Finance, City of Barberton, Ohio. Ordinance twenty-three twenty twenty-one presented by Mr. Greer. Enter into agreement with Summit County in accordance and ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into an agreement with Summit County to join the Summit County Service Department Response Network, SCSDRN, and declaring an emergency.
Ms., Ms. Mr. President, I think you're on mute.
Muted.
Yeah, I'm muted. Okay, motion to suspend, Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section five point one zero of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
And Mrs. Angeloff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to suspend.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Greer, seconded by Mrs. Angeloff to suspend the rule as required by section five point one zero of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Mrs. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick?
Yes.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Jabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Angeloff?
Yes.
Motion to adopt, Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, and Mrs. Angeloff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second that motion to adopt.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mr. Greer, seconded by Mrs. Angeloff to adopt ordinance number twenty-three twenty twenty-one. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Angeloff?
Yes.
Mrs. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Mrs. Coburn?
Yes.
Mr. Jabber?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick?
Yes.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Okay, this ends the first readings.
Second reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number twelve twenty twenty-one presented by Mrs. Frye. Two thousand and twenty-one Operating in Capital Budget. An ordinance adopting a budget for various for various fines of the City of Barberton for a period beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-one, and providing condition therof and declaring it an emergency.
Okay, before we go on, I don't believe thirteen twenty twenty-one was voted on, was it?
No, we're gonna do it tonight. Tonight's the second reading.
Tonight's second reading only, right?
No, we're gonna vote on it tonight.
Okay, all right.
It is the second reading.
Okay.
Okay, ordinance thirteen twenty twenty-one presented by Mrs. Angeloff. Enter into an agreement Summit County Department of Building Standards. An ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into an agreement with the Summit County Department of Building Standards to allow county inspectors to serve as backup inspectors to conduct electrical, plumbing, and building inspections and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Angeloff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by section five point one zero of the Barberton City Charter be suspended.
And Mrs. Coburn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second the motion for suspension.
A motion was made by Mrs. Angeloff and seconded by Mrs. Coburn to suspend the rule as required by section five point one zero of the Barberton City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. DeBevick?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Frye?
Yes.
Mrs. Angeloff?
Yes.
Mrs. Coburn?
Yes.
Mr. Jabber?
Yes.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Motion to adopt, Mrs. Angeloff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-one be adopted as presented.
And Mrs. Coburn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second the motion for the adoption of ordinance number thirteen twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Angeloff and seconded by Mrs. Coburn to adopt ordinance number thirteen twenty twenty-one. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Heidig?
Mr. Medges, Mr. Heidig had his hand up.
Okay, I couldn't see him. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Counselor Angeloff and Director Tracy for the extra work putting us at ease. I, like I said last week, I know I'm just a freshman on the council and I had some concerns and I appreciate you taking the extra time to put those concerns at ease. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Mr. Jabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. Angeloff?
Yes.
Mrs. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Heidig?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick?
Yes.
This ends the second readings.
Third readings of ordinances and resolutions.
There are none.
Appointments.
There are none.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have a liquor license transfer received on February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one from the Joe for Joe LLC doing business as JoJo's Drive-Thru on Wolf Avenue, Barberton, Ohio. And it's going to go to Magic, Magics Express Mart LLC on Worcester Road North, Barberton, Ohio. None of occasions were sent to Chief Marber, Safety Director Dougherty, and Councilman Jabber, whose ward it's in, and all of them stated they have no objections.
Okay. Communications from the mayor.
Mr. President?
Mr. Medges, again, Mr. Heidig has his hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Heidig. I cannot see you.
That's, that's all right. Thank you, Mr. President. Clerk, I don't see the type of license here. I know it's a C-class, but do you have that on hand there? Which number?
Two seconds.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, thank you. Communications from the mayor.
Wait a minute. He didn't finish. Mr. Heidig needs his answer.
Yes, it is a C-class.
What, uh, what number? Is it C-one, C-two?
I'm looking. C-one and C-two.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Not for me, Mr. President. From the mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, in the essence of time, uh, try to keep it short and just talk about COVID. Uh, so there have been some variants that have been found in Summit County. Variant P-one called the variant of concern, that's what the scientists are calling it, that causes COVID-19. Also, B-one-one-seven variant in twelve counties in the state, including Summit, Portage, Medina, and Cogga County. So they're tracking these kind of separate, because these lead to COVID. Um, and so they're tracking the different, uh, kind of nuances with And so, they're tracking the different kind of nuances with all these different variances. So, these cases in Summit County, or I'm sorry, in the state of Ohio have increased from six cases, known cases, on February 22nd to 33 cases today. So, those are increasing and they're keeping tabs on that. On the COVID-19 front, we continue to see the trend going down in number of cases. So, for instance, the seven-day average last week for the previous seven days was 90.1. Today, it was 87 for the past seven days. So, it's going down. It wasn't too many weeks ago that the average was in the 300, 400 range. On the vaccine front, the state of Ohio has completed over 1.1 million vaccines, but that's under 10% of the state's population. In Summit County, they've finished about 8.84%, which is just under 48,000 in Summit County. The vaccine for Phase 1C and Phase 2 started March 4th. And they just came out today with a list for Phase 1D, as in David, and Phase 2B. And that is starting this Thursday, March 11th. So, Phase 1D is type, anyone with type 2 diabetes or end-stage renal disease. Then Phase 2B, as in boy, is based on age. And so, that's beginning with anyone that's 50 years of age or older here in the state of Ohio. So, they're kind of bypassing anyone 55 and older and going straight from 60 to 50. And that starts again this Thursday, March 11th, that you can sign up. Access Point will host a vaccination clinic here in Barberton this Wednesday. It's already filled up. It's for their clients and others that they reached out to. So, that includes Phase 1A, 1B, 1C, or Phase 2 if they meet criteria. Summit County did make available today applications for working through United Way on rental and mortgage assistance and utility assistance. So, we've been working with them on that application process and getting that out. On the federal side, you know, hopefully you guys have seen the news where the President Biden stimulus bill went from the House with a lot of debate and discussion over to the Senate side. They've had debate and changes and now they've voted on it and it's going back to the House. So, that's expected to be voted on either tomorrow or Wednesday. And so, we'll see if there's any changes from the House with those, then it goes back over to the Senate side. But I'm assuming with all the discussion and debate that what the House has now from the Senate will be voted on with no problem, but it's Congress, so your guess is as good as mine. President Biden is scheduled to deliver an address via primetime television this Thursday on COVID and the updates. So, we know more vaccines are flowing in, the stimulus relief program is being discussed and voted on. And we'll see how that shakes out for us, for Ohio, for Summit County, and Barberton. And we'll see what the updates are from the president this Thursday. And I don't want to go through all the stats and increases or decreases, but you know, as I mentioned, things are continuing to tread in a positive light. So, that's all I have, sir.
You're not on, Craig.
Did it again.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Anything else from the body? Mrs. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Medges. I know that Mr. Weaver has waited all night to do the water fund for us. And I was wondering if after he does that section, that maybe we could meet online another day this week because I'm looking around at all the pictures of everybody on here, like Hollywood Squares, and people are yawning and I think that they're detached. Therefore, I know that the courts are going to be presenting, and I thought that they were going to do it on the 15th, but perhaps he didn't give us a solid date. So, perhaps when Bob gives us the court report, we could tie up any loose ends with questions that people have asked. And I saw that you sent out answers today, and I was going to go over mine to see if most of the things that I had asked previously have been answered. How does everyone feel about that?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
So am I.
I am too. I apologize if I was the one yawning.
We've all been yawning.
Mr. Mayor, what do you think of that? Do you think that that could be put together, that we could have a meeting that was just on the budget?
I'd have to check my schedule for later this week. Next week may be better. But you're right, Mr. Inkavati is preparing for the 15th on the courts budgets. Not a lot of, so that's more informative because there's not a lot of wiggle room because, and he can go through all the kind of nuances of state laws that they have to follow. And then I think that we can get the water budget in the same night. I'm not sure what's on the docket, kind of depends on that.
Well, the water budget, I'm sorry, the water budget he could do tonight because I feel so bad. I see he's still on and he's waited all night to give his report, so.
Yeah, we can do that.
If you give, we give us Reader's Digest version of the budget. He goes into so much detail, but I love it. But I don't think everybody's going to make it tonight if we get too deep. Mrs. DeBevick?
I would like, if we could, to meet maybe a day next, an evening next week, kind of maybe earlier in the evening.
Well, I have. I have a council Monday, and then Tuesday I have border zoning, and Wednesday I have planning. So, I couldn't do it Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of next week.
How's Thursday sound for everybody?
Sounds good.
Thursday is difficult for me.
Yeah, I'll be gone this Thursday or next Thursday. Is it this Thursday or next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Oh, next Thursday, I'll be good.
That'd be the 22nd. I think. Wait a minute.
No, the 18th.
It's the 18th. No.
18.
Yes, it would be the 18th.
Yeah, it's the 18th.
I have a foundation meeting that need to.
Yeah. I mean, you can go ahead and schedule something on the 16th or the 17th. I'm going to be downtown anyhow. I'll just hop on a computer down there and just pick up where you guys left off. Don't hold me up, but I've got five extra meetings this month.
If I may.
I'm sorry.
Next week, being one of the busiest restaurant weeks of the year, the nighttime is not very available.
It's on Wednesday.
Yes, that is impossible for me to be able to get away from that. I don't know anybody else's feelings, but if Sunday nights are acceptable, I don't know what everybody does on Sunday nights. I just don't know. I know some people have things.
That's good for me.
Could I say something?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
I don't know if the 29th is too late, but we don't have a council meeting that Monday night.
No, that's the 29th, and we have to have the budget passed.
Before then.
Okay, what happens if we move our, what happens if we take the third, the fourth Monday off and have the budget meeting and then have our legislative meeting the fifth Monday, the 29th?
Actually, may I one more time?
Yeah.
Could we, this would be up to the president, but could we combine a committee of the whole and a legislative in one night and then the next week dedicate solely to budget?
Okay, so you're talking about the 15th doing both of March?
Aren't we already seeing the courts on the 15th?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have a fifth Monday, the 29th. Maybe we can have a special legislation to pass that, pass the budget on the 29th, and then that would give us the 22nd that we can meet with other budget stuff. I know our, it says no fifth Monday, but.
I would be, I would be in favor of a special legislative just for the budget on the 29th.
Just for the budget? I think we've done that before for other things.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah. So, we can pass the budget on the 29th because I think it has to be done by the 31st.
Correct.
And then on the 22nd, finish up the budget stuff. 22nd, 23rd, or something.
I like that idea.
So, you're talking about the budget meeting on the 22nd?
Yeah. We can have it on the 15th and 22nd, and then we'll vote as a special meeting on the fifth Monday, which is the 29th, just on the budget.
That's fine with me. It's up to everyone else.
6:00 PM?
Yeah.
That doesn't really, that doesn't really alleviate the late-night budget talk. I don't know about anybody else, but for me, I can't, I can't pay attention to it.
Correct, but if we, if we were to, if we were to combine the committee of the whole and the legislative, that would give us that extra week that we would do our committee meetings and then straight into budget.
We can always do it at 5:30 AM in the morning.
Another tick.
I'll be awake.
Early bird gets the worm.
I don't want it.
I agree, Mr. Griffin. And I hope to be aware, but I still agree.
Mr. Mayor? How many more sections do we have to go over?
Yes, how many more?
Well, we've got, you know, I was trying to hit the more important ones. So, we've got off the top of my head, we've got the courts, we've got water, which have several different funds, and then we've got streets, streets capital. That's what comes to the top of my head. I can't recall all of them.
Well, we can do the water tonight, and then we can work out the courts and the streets, and then we should pretty much be done. And everybody is supposed to be going through their books anyway, so if they have anything that they, you know, wanted explained in more detail, they can send you an email. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, water tonight, courts next week, depending on the rest of council next week, could be courts and, you know, streets and streets capital and a few others. And then if there's no other emails, I don't see why it couldn't be passed on the 22nd as scheduled. If not, we can make some alterations.
Mrs. Frye?
Yes.
I have a list of questions that, and we haven't, some of them we've touched on as we've gone through, but, you know, it would take me a long time to type this out and email it. That's why I was hoping to just do it at another time when it's not 9 o'clock, 9:30 at night, so that, you know, we can, we can answer our questions.
But we never know how long, we just never know how long our meetings are.
Well, I know.
Of your hand written? Of your hand written and just see if the mayor?
It's, yeah, I have it in two notebooks and in the book, and I, I would just copy and scan this, except that I have, I have just the page number written, and then I have the notes in the book on the page.
Well, Carla, you're just going to have to bear with us old people, you know? I mean, you're going to have to just, I'm as tired as everybody else. I guess we'll just have to see what the mayor wants to do.
I'm just saying that I feel bad then because the way that we've done it, it's almost as if it's a filibuster. They're going through line item by line item, and then by the time they go through that, I don't know about you guys, but everybody's done, so we can't, we don't ask questions. That, that's just, that's my opinion. It's fine, I'll do whatever, but I just.
If we were to combine, instead of having committee of the whole next week, if we would have it on the 22nd, followed by the legislative, that would open up the 15th for committee meetings and nothing but budget talks.
When will we vote on the budget, though? On the 29th?
That would be the 22nd because if we were to skip committee of the whole next week and combine it the 22nd, we would go committees, committee of the whole, then legislative on the 22nd. And 15th would just be committee meetings and straight into the budget.
And we should limit the committee meetings to a half hour like we do when we're.
Like we used to, yeah.
That would, that would also eliminate the special meeting on the 29th.
Okay.
We could always start a little earlier, too. You know, start at 6, maybe 5. Just throwing that out there.
5 to 10.
5 to 10, okay.
Like I said, the, if the courts are going on the 15th, I would, my suggestion would be no committee of the whole the 15th and combine them on the 22nd.
Whatever works. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter to me. I'm just, you know, trying to get through and.
It's fine, so actually the 15th would not be a council meeting, it would just be budget meeting on the 15th.
Meetings and budgets, and then the 22nd would be committees, committee of the whole, then legislative, and that would be it.
Okay with me.
We would have to limit the amount of time spent on the committees. But I think that we've already gotten into a lot of the areas where there's a lot of chatter, and that would probably work. But anyway, let's let Kenny get on so that he can get home.
Well, we have to adjourn.
Mr. President? A couple of things. First, Happy International Women's Day to all women in the 44203. We have a lot of great women in this area, starting with Lisa Miller, and we also have good ladies in our council. And also tomorrow, I will be guest bartender at block 7, from 4 to 9. All proceeds are going to the Barberton Baseball High School team. I'd love to get a show up, buy you guys a drink, beer, or a shot, or even dinner, come on down, and I hope to see you guys there tomorrow. That'll be it, Mr. President.
Anyone else?
Yeah, the 15th, Mr. President, would be streets, health, planning, and finance. So, I believe with what we've got going, those would go pretty quickly.
Yeah.
So, you're just talking on the 15th of budget only?
The committee meetings, that's straight to budget, and then the 22nd committee meetings, then committee of the whole, then legislative, and the vote would still be on the 22nd and everything would be lined up. It would give us next Monday to just do a quick committees and then nothing but budget since we already have the courts coming.
Okay. What about the 29th?
Nothing. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have anything the 29th under that plan.
Okay. And we're going to meet at 6 o'clock?
Yep, because 6 o'clock, like usual, we'd go burn through the committees, straight into budget, and then the next week on the 22nd would be the regular committees, committee of the whole to call and the votes.
22nd is legislative.
Right, we would have committee of the whole for that.
And committee, and committee of the whole.
Correct.
Right.
Would that be an acceptable plan?
Good for me.
I think it's a great plan.
Mm-hmm, perfect.
All righty. With nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. DeBevick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
And Mr. Heide?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to adjourn.
It was moved by Mrs. DeBevick and seconded by Mr. Heide that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned at 9:10. Mr. Weaver, are you ready?
Yes, I am. And I promise I can be much more brief today because there is some duplication.
And, uh, I, I promise I can be much more brief today because there is, uh, some duplication with, uh, you know, from the sewer budget to the, to water budget. And, uh, if you take a look at the revenue page for water, that is page one forty-nine, uh, you, you'll, you'll see the permits, uh, you know, water, uh, usage charges. Uh, one of the differences between the two is the sale of bulk water. We sell water. We don't take in, uh, you know, we, unlike the sewer plant where we take in truck waste. Uh, all of these lines are very similar. If you have any questions regarding those, I'd be happy to take that. But I, it's quite unnecessary for me to go through every one of those lines. Any question? If, if not, I'll flip to the next page. And, you know, this is the administration budget, and as I mentioned a week ago, uh, this is, this mirrors the administration budget over on the sewer side. There is, uh, one person different in the wages. We, we pay for an additional clerk over in the building department on sewer side. That one is missing here over on the water side. That's because they do, uh, sewer, um, permits over there. Uh, there's minor differences through the operating side of that budget. And, uh, many of those are, are actually controlled by the finance department. If there is a line there that you have a, a question on, I'd be happy to, uh, have discussion on that. Anything on page one fifty? Very, very similar to what we talked about last week.
Denny?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have a question about one forty-nine, and I want, I wanted to know how we're doing with the collection of outstanding, um, water, water, uh, water bills that are.
Okay, delinquencies.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the delinquencies in the middle, uh, before we started to, uh, go shut offs again in September had risen to about a half a million dollars. They dropped significantly. And, uh, you know, a couple of, you know, that is a, a good motivat, motivation, uh, to get, uh, that paid. But, uh, also we've seen, uh, some money come in through, uh, like Summit Cares, uh, that some of the other agencies that we, uh, use and, uh, connect our customers with that are having difficulties. They've contributed quite a bit as well, so that has helped a lot. And, uh, people are paying now better than they were, uh, in the summer when it was in the middle of this crisis. So I think, uh, we're seeing some improvement in the economy in that, in that area. So, uh, yes, those are down. I don't have the exact number in front of me that we, from this previous month, but we're, we're down quite a bit from, uh, the height of this in the middle of the summer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Was there, there anything on the administration budget then? If, if not, I can, uh, uh, go over to the, uh, to the water plant. Wages bounced around a bit last year, uh, due to scheduling for COVID. We had to keep people separated as much possible, much as possible. Treatment plant operators are essential workers that we had to keep working. If somebody would get it, we had to keep them separate. So it did cause more overtime. We also lost, we, uh, one of our operators passed away last year. We had another retired. We're, we're currently one short, so, um, we're hoping to add that sometime this year. And, uh, that's why that budget is a bit higher than, um, uh, what it was in twenty, even though we had the additional overtime. Um, you know, the professional services will be related to, uh, some work we're doing for the dam. We're attempting to get FEMA money for construction. We've applied for that. We've been through, this is the third round that we're into, so we're getting deeper into that funding. Uh, that was for ninety percent. Uh, that would be fantastic if we could land that, and we're, we're still, we're in the, uh, we're, we're still in the middle of that one. Um, uh, if you, you notice chemicals are on the high side. That has to do with, uh, a granular, granular activated carbon is something that we are budgeting for there. We may not need it. It depends on, uh, the reservoir. Uh, with algae blooms, it may, it may be necessary. When you have those, you feed more, uh, granular activated carbon, and that's why the additional money is in there. It's, it's, and it is an expensive item. Um, are there any questions on any of those line, line items?
Excuse me, Denny?
Mm-hmm.
Carol again. I had a question about what you brought up about the dam. And you said that you are going out for a grant and you're hoping that it comes back at ninety percent. Now, would this just be for repairs? Or is there a chance that at some point we are going to get to, you know, um, replace it?
Well, there's, there was two approaches, and one was a complete replacement. That was over twenty million. But we could refurbish the dam and still have a fifty-year lifespan with the, and that would be the goal. That would be basically the same as with a, uh, brand new dam. There would be more basis on it down the road, but the cost of it would be around ten million. It would be half. So, uh, uh, when we, we went through a, a weighted evaluation, you know, with, uh, with a new dam versus refurbishment, and, uh, the, to refurbish the current dam made more sense financially and for long term as well, even with maintenance.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Weaver, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, in your line item for electric power, um, last year's budget was two hundred and forty thousand, and you used two hundred and one. And then in two thousand twenty-one, your budget's two sixty. Um, that's an increase of twenty-eight percent. Um, why is that in the electric power?
You know, we came in much, much better than what we thought we would. You know, this budget was actually developed last August. I think that could be less. Uh, and also, uh, last week, uh, uh, Mr. Tracy mentioned that we've made some better deals on the electric, and that's, that may have had some, uh, impact on it as well. Uh,
Okay.
Last year was the first full year that we had with the, uh, uh, the new rapid sand filters that are in place. We did a, a complete rebuild of those. And I think we're saving some, we have some cost savings there, even on the power side as well.
Okay. Uh, another thing, your equipment, any furnishings? You've got a hundred thousand dollars in there. Um, what are you buying with that?
That's for a high ser, we call a high service pump. Uh, the high service pump, uh, fill the tank, so there, it's a very high head pump. Uh, expensive, uh, but, uh, we, we have to keep those going. That's how we get water into the city. And, uh, one of those, uh, needs replaced. That's for a brand new pump, and that's only for one pump, by the way.
Wow.
It's pretty expensive.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I, I had a question about the grant that you were trying to do for the refurbishing of the dam.
Yes.
Last year, we, we had to hire professional services, I believe, to outsource to try to find insurance for that. Is that correct? Or we, we had, we were, had to find separate insurance for it because of.
Yes, we, we wasn't able to ensure that at the level we had in the past. And I think we was only able to get, uh, it was under the umbrella policy. I think it was only for one million. In the past, we'd had ten million. Uh, so, um, yeah, that's, that's definitely a concern, and those, some of the things that we're using to help, uh, get this grant. You know, the situation that we're in.
Would, would refurbishing get us, uh, a better rate? For.
Uh, we would be able to, uh, we, we certainly would be able to get the insurance then. And, uh, right, right now, it's just not even attainable.
Yeah.
And, uh, the condition of it would be, you know, comparable to new. I mean, uh, there are some interior parts that we would still have to do. Maybe some grouting, power grouting. We drill into the cracks and things like that, uh, you know, and, but it wouldn't, it would, but not be a tremendous cost, and you, uh, there is this, like, say, of substantial savings to that.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. Anything else on the water treatment plant? Mm-hmm. If not, we could, uh, jump over to water distribution. And, um, um, water distri, and this is, you know, similar to the, uh, collection side. It's actually, all this is performed at the same location, at the same, uh, garage where these workers are housed, and many of the same workers, uh, overlap into from water to sewer. And, uh, so there are weight splits between some of these people and, uh, and the sewer side as well. Uh, it's, uh, we, we do have more people that work, though, on the water side than we do on the, uh, sewer collection side. So, uh, any questions on that, uh, on the wages section for water distribution?
Oh. How many people are paid out of that, Danny? I'm sorry.
Uh, may flip over here. Okay.
There were seventeen out of the other fund, and you said they overlap, so.
Yes, it's, uh, see, we got one. There is the, as far as budgeted, it's eighteen point seven. Uh, because of the shared on the, on the sewer side, but we have over twenty people that are in that garage.
There's twenty-four people down there.
Twenty-four? Okay, thanks, Greg. I thought you may have that, and that's on the tip of your tongue. Thank you. Utilities total, we have, uh, I think it's fifty-three. You know, but that, that includes both treatment plants, water distribution, uh, the, uh, customer service. Then on the, uh, the operation side, uh, all these same line items that you've seen in, uh, every other budget. Uh, these are a little closer than what you've seen on the, uh, on the water plant, on the water plant budget. Uh, the water plant budget is a little more volatile than, uh, than this one. Although we do, uh, breaks, uh, can cause more overtime as well as, um, if we have a bad year with the supplies that we need to make those repairs. On, uh, page, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, on the infrastructure side for water lines, it's, there's a budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, is that just for repairs, or is that part of, uh, the water line replacement that we're going to have on, um, Taylor, or?
It, it's for water line replacement. It can also, uh, be used. Quite often we'll use that if there's a major break somewhere and we have to bring in a contractor. We'd pull that. There wouldn't be enough to cover something like that in, uh, in the operating budget. And, uh, we use Kenmore Construction and, uh, quite often in the past for some of those major repairs where the line is very deep or large or in a congested area. We can even use some of the design for that. We're, we're, uh, discussing adding another block to, uh, the Taylor, uh, road design and, uh, applying for those funds here in July. From, uh, OPWC.
And that's probably in the capital budget anyway, correct?
Mm-hmm, that's, that is the capital budget at three fifty, yes. There's two vehicles there to one twenty-five, and, uh, there's a mini excavator as part of the sixty-five thousand. And, uh, and there was a small amount in buildings. I know he wanted to refurbish some of the, uh, closers on his overhead doors and do some other internal work in his buildings. After the detail we went through on the sewer side, it made it a little easier here because so many of these lines are similar. And I think you got a pretty good overview of how those, this budget functions. Seen anything there that sticks, that stands out?
Nope. Nope.
Okay, you know, if you have any questions, you go through, something pops up, uh, please don't hesitate to contact me. Be happy to answer. All right.
Thank you, Denny.
Okay, well, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I'll reiterate what Mr. Weaver said. If you have any questions on any other, contact me and I'll get you an answer. Um, so if you have anything written down and, you know, it kind of makes the budget process go easier or a little quicker, too, if I can get back to everybody with your questions, um, and it provides me a little enough time to get a more in-depth, thorough, uh, response as well, so.
Great. Well, thank you, everyone, and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Great job, Danny. Anything else? Let's do it again next Monday.
Yay.
See you.
All right, I'll see you guys.